We're gonna open the meeting. Today is the tenth of June at six o'clock and we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ms. Johnson, you take roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbitt.
Here.
House Member Johnson.
Here.
House Member Blazer.
Here.
House Member Rainville.
President.
House Member Swenson.
Here.
Chief Deputy Jacobson. Fire Chief Miller. Administrative Assistant Stokel here and myself Natalie Johnson. Roll call is taken, sir.
All right. Thank you for taking roll call. The Code of Conduct is posted in the back. If there's any questions on that, we will move to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
House Member Rainville.
I would move that we move item six A under Planning and Zoning up to Consent. Cindy is our planner is not here to comment on that. It's pretty self-explanatory.
And there's nothing prepared for Planning and. Okay. Is there anything else for agenda moves?
Mr. Mayor.
House Member, please go ahead.
I'd like to move items three, I, J, and K from the consent agenda to. Let's see, new business or some of the old business, let's see.
I think you dropped my old business.
Drop my old business, please.
Okay, I, J, K to old business. I would also like to provide an internet update. So if we could make that. After K under the three we just dropped down, moved them under nine for in the old business. That would be all right.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a, I don't know if we need to move it to pull it out or just a clarification for a three C. If it's easier, we can just move it down to item L under Old Business.
Let's just move it down. Anything else for the agenda? Okay, it's all good. Well, for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. All right, we'll open up the public forum. I'd ask you to keep to three minutes. Please state your name and address. First up is Deb Dryden, please. Certainly can. All right, Senator Eric. How do you pronounce your last name? Lucero. All right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, residents now then. I'm Eric Lucero, I'm the senator for this area. And it's my privilege to come by. I've already been here for years and I'm here with an update. So that's why I'm here tonight to give a brief overview of something like a lot has happened and it's all. E, five. For those who don't know me, I am the senator in my first term for this area. I live in San Antonio. And the Senate term is four years. I mean, my third year of four-year term. Prior to this office, I was in the State House, so a representative for eight years. This is her fourth term. Before we just being opened up the seat in Ramona. So again, the term is passed for the threes. So as we came into session earlier this year, just to say a brief reminder where the dynamics were. We had the seventy-two billion dollar budget that was passed in twenty twenty-three. And that represented a forty percent increase, roughly twenty billion dollars. And also have been spent in eighteen million dollar surplus and raised taxes by ten billion. When we came into session this year in twenty twenty-five, we were facing a six billion dollar budget death. The dynamics were significantly different. Additionally, rather than having control by one party, both houses of the legislative branch and the executive branch. The House of Representatives was split. In fact, right after the election, it was sixty-six Democrats to sixty-seven in the poll. And some of the dynamics that happened in session, the Democrats in the House, they didn't show up. To seven for twenty-three days led to late the start essentially of seven for nearly a month, little over three weeks. So we adjourned this session then on May nineteen, not having passed the budget. And when I say passed the budget, the budget is entirely the state budget. Must have happened every year, last time in twenty twenty-three, this time in twenty twenty-five. And the entire state budget is consists of approximately twelve to fifteen separate bills covering the different state agencies. So we had not passed most of those budgets. So the negotiations continued since May nineteen. Unfortunately, most of those conversations were behind the roof. And they were the life transparency to the public. Very few had any idea what was going on. Of the two hundred and one legislators that make up the House and the Senate. Approximately half dozen, two dozen were even involved with the vote. And so all of a sudden we find out on Friday, let's call this, oh, we called in this stuff in September on Monday. Yep. And so we have fourteen bills, roughly eighteen hours passing bill. And it is impossible to read fourteen math spending bills. And then have, you know, generally we pass one or two, maybe three budget bills on a given date. We have fourteen, yes. So lack of transparency, lacking of knowing what was in there, but they were all passed. And so just some of the highlights. Unfortunately, there was a failure to pass any anti-fraud provisions. We saw many, many headlines in the last, most of last year, actually, not almost, not even single week without. Without some headline of a new discovery of a new fraud and we are over six hundred million dollars in confirmed fraud. Unfortunately, there were no unsecured charges. Unfortunately, we failed to pass any school funding reform. In terms of the first people funding reform, because many people in our community are getting burned out of the stick in terms of. The way that the funding work. Many of the costs, this is directly linked with the Council's four districts staff and county commissions. Is that that costs, many mandates were passed in the last couple of years. But because based on about the deficit, there are unfortunately several costs that are now going to be shifted to the local levels. On mandates remain, state will do any program, but the burden of those mandates will now fall on the shoulders of various businesses. There are quite two special education, nursing homes, intermodal delivery, that absolutely still. Some of the things that were beneficial, we did sell, but proposed cuts to non-public schools. That was a huge victory. I heard communications across our community from any of that community to the Senate. And we were able to make that happen. We were one of the biggest hangups and we were mainly helping the state yesterday. Being one of the provisions that was passed in twenty twenty-three was to extend tax payer funded health cares to be illegal foreign entry. And that started January first of this year. And so one of the rollbacks in that was connected was rolling back then adults. So taxpayers will no longer be funding the healthcare of adults as of the end of this, so we rolled back. And then, I want to repeat, excuse me, the last item for a highlight is a bonding bill that passed. There are multiple, it was a bonding bill focused on infrastructure. I can't give you the details of all the different funds there. But many different things there for across the state. Last couple of weeks, I was up in the loop on a housing panel to discuss housing. We have housing prices, housing authority, supply for. And after this, there were some zoning land reforms. Most of those are adamantly not workable or completely began. Things that I have been working to not support. And tomorrow, University of Minnesota on AI, my back home, for those who don't know, I own Center of Security. So tomorrow, University of Minnesota, there's a great conference on various technologies in healthcare space. I'll be at one of the panels. Speaking again on the, so with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I know it's over three minutes. I appreciate the breaks. Trying to go as fast as I can, but I again appreciate that through the doing. So a lot of them on the state, it's going to be a very busy summer. And for anybody who wants to reach out to me, I love hearing from everyone. The best way to reach out to me is by email, which is S E N, short for Senator, S E N dot Eric dot Lucero. And M in Senate dot T O. So I, there is a link or two. I could take questions with Darny. If not, I'm going to move on to the same line.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Senator? I really appreciate you coming in. It was very nice, very nice update. Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming down with the capo. I don't even want to, I did all those because it'll be Mark maybe.
Maybe Mark, I don't know. We got to spend a half hour together, but I appreciate the time.
Well, thank you. I look forward to hearing from you again in the meantime for the summer.
So if we can post his email address on the website or something, so if they've got questions, they can reach him. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thanks so much.
This is Mike. Hopefully they could hear him a little bit. Ms. Dryden, would you like to address the council, please? We didn't have the mic.
Deb Dryden, six, six, eight, Old Viking Boulevard. Sorry, it's a difficult phone. Randy and I have been taxpayers in Now Then for over forty years. It's clearly a shame what Now Then has done to us. They weren't paying attention when your new planner and old attorney and the old administrator decided to have conversations and conversations about a developer's agreement. Over and over costing us over nine thousand dollars. It's clearly a shame that that happened to us. Now I hear we're having another three hundred and twenty-five dollar bill that we have to pay. Sounds like it's something to do with us not paying the nine thousand. We had till. The bill said March thirty-first for it. And evidently sometime in mid-March, the attorney came again and discussed what to do to collect our, the escrow and is what we were assuming that is. Usually when we ask, it's unnecessary and unreasonable for. I don't know. Also, I want to address the the Facebook and social media where one of the members posted that the Drydens were disruptive at one of the meetings. One of the meetings that we went to that was canceled, we, I had, I wanted to say something. And it was taken away from us, our freedom of speech. And all I said was, I would like to say something very calmly. I didn't get disruptive and it was just me and it wasn't my family. And I was put on social media as the Drydens were disruptive and I don't appreciate that. Guess that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Move on, move on to the consent, consent agenda. We've already made modification for it. So approval of the consent agenda as is.
Mr. Mayor.
House Member Rainville.
I would move the consent agenda as amended.
Please, your second.
Second.
Second, Stuart Boat, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Chief Miller in the Fire Department.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here to give an update on where we're, where we are at, six months into my employment and kind of where we're going. And it is on, definitely. So, so we're giving an update for June twenty twenty-five. Talk about some of the accomplishments that we've had. We've completed a needs assessment in the first six months. We've talked about that in prior meetings, kind of where we're at, what, what the needs of the Fire Department are. We've updated expired equipment and supplies. We had a lot of supplies that were outdated when I first got here. We identified immediate safety needs and made repairs on vehicles, including a replacement of eighteen separate tires for the trucks that were either outdated or in need of repair along with brakes for our tanker. We are currently securing donations for updated office space in the fire station with the local cabinet shop. That is going to go into, so they're going to take our office space that we have and actually make two, two office spaces in there, both for the deputies and for the Fire Department. And that's all complete donation. So now we're going in on the twenty-fourth of, of June. Not as Lakeside Cabinet Street, that's going to be doing that. So we'll bring that donation forward to to the council. So. We've converted inventory training and equipment and accountability to electronic form for efficiency. We were doing everything by paper when I, when, when I first came here. And so with the help of Pila Stokel, we're able to convert all that paperwork into electronic form. So now our firefighters can actually do checking the trucks and the equipment and things like that right off their cell phones. So it makes it much, much more efficient. We actually have record keeping for that now. So, and that's important to us because part of, of training is actually making sure that we check our equipment correctly. So we're able to capture those hours of training that we couldn't before. And I spoke to the importance of, of having good training records when it comes to ISO ratings. So we completed an emergency operations plan from the city. All of you, I think have signed off on it hopefully, and we've got copies out there. So you've seen that. So, that's fine. We have made applications for several grant opportunities for equipment and turnout gear. I constantly looking for new opportunities for us to get equipment or, or turnout gear or ways that we can reduce the fiscal responsibility of citizens through different organizations. Some of the grants that I've applied for have been through National Volunteer Fire Council and Center for Energy. So we've got a couple of them floating out there. Again, these take months to, to kind of mull through the applications, find out who will receive any of those. So. Currently meeting regularly with, you know, County Sheriff's Office and Barnum staff. We're trying to problem solve the issues that we're having there and reduce the call volume that we're having, and we're having great success in that. And I'm sure the Sheriff's Office can speak to, to the partnerships that we're creating now. We are partnering with the State Farm Marshal's Office and Century College through the donation of a local family who has a farm said that the home is no longer useful to, to them, and so they need to remove it. So rather than just tear it down, they're allowing us to do some training in that building. And we'll actually be able to train fire, fire investigators from both Hennepin County and Anoka County. Along with department members of, if they so choose to do that. And so that'll be the first phase of, of training for that building. We all are also using that on a drill night basis where we can actually maneuver hose lines and things like that through the structure where we couldn't do that. And, and say, my house or anyone else's house. But since it is kind of an abandoned house, we can do that. So they've been, they've been wonderful to let us do that. And then at the end of this fire investigation class, which will be in September and October. We will do live structured fire training with the department and other surrounding community departments. Where we'll actually take the entire house down to the ground. So, but that'll be coming in the fall. So it's a great partnership. We're, we're very fortunate to have that, a resident that will allow us to do that. So. We've established connections with countywide partners. Again, I, I spoke to the fact that we really want to make connections with our neighbors. We've struggled with that in the past and we've done a wonderful job. I've reported on how many times that we've assisted mutually and auto aid with our neighbors. We have a very solid working relationship with our neighboring and community departments. Up until the point where we're all talking about starting to, to train together. We've created a, an Anoka County Training Committee now. So each department has a member on it that is part of this training committee so that we can actually discuss how we can train better, how we can do things together. So that is, is something that's up and coming. So that's, that's the first half. Let's get on to strategic posts in the second half. We need to recruit firefighters and that has been a top priority. Well, we have to get our house in order to do that. So we're at the point where we have a house in order. I think we're in good shape to start recruiting firefighters. So we're going to have some signage going up. We're going to work with city staff to do some social media announcements. We're starting to track recent home sales so that we can look at, are there opportunities to, to seek out new residents that are in the community to do that? We are in the second half going to identify potential future leaders. I think it's no, it shouldn't be a surprise that I am not long-term for, for now then. I, I have a six-month contract. I am willing to and want to extend that contract because I feel it is in the best interest of the community to grow this department from within, grow the leaders from within. But right now, two-thirds of our department is around that three years or under marked for experience. We don't have the experience to cultivate leaders today. We will tomorrow and in the future. So, so we are looking at who can, who can we identify? Who can we start to push down those leadership paths that, that want to do that? So in the second half, we'll be identifying those, those leaders. The, we'll be identifying budget priorities and needs for twenty twenty-six will be coming forward through the budget process for that. We'll, we're going to accept and put into service this new tanker finally. Next week, we have three members that are traveling to Florida to finalize that, that tanker to make sure that everything that's in, that was in the bid has actually come to fruition on that piece of equipment before we accept it. So that is something that's not funded by the taxpayers, that factory trip is actually included in with the purchase of the vehicle. So, so they'll be going down there. They'll finalize that. We should have this tanker end of the month, first part of July, depending on transport. So it takes a while for them to get from Florida to here. So, and we'll be implementing training when we do that. So. Looking forward to twenty twenty-six, what we, what we would like to do is, is look at some program implementation. We want to look at a, implement a structured plan for online and hands-on training. That is more department instructor based. Right now, we, we are contracting different instructors from different entities out there. Which cost us money to do. Again, identifying those future leaders. Getting them to step forward, getting them to train other firefighters. We can do this internally. It will save us money doing that. And so that's what we're going to be looking at. We also have to balance, you know, the firefighter's time. So work-life balance. So I want to look at some ways that we can do some online training that allows them to not spend every Wednesday at the fire station doing training, but allows them on their own time when they have, when they have that extra time to go ahead and complete a course that might be online, that something that would be very easy to do and allows them to do it at their own pace. Which allows them the flexibility then to, to spend time with their families too. So. We would like to introduce a fire inspections prevention program and ordinance to support that. We don't do fire inspections in the community. I've talked about this in the past here. It is a liability that we're not doing those and we definitely need to do those. Because the first thing that's going to happen is if a business has a fire in their, in their establishment. They're going to look for the city to find out when's the last time we did a fire inspection there. And we really want to produce that to make sure that we're providing safe environments for, for businesses. And it's not about penalizing businesses. It's actually about educating them. So a lot of people don't know fire safety in the businesses till somebody walks in and points it out to them. So it's important for, for the businesses to accept. The few businesses that I've had conversations with have welcomed a fire inspection. Would like to see that. They want to know if they're doing things wrong or if they're doing things that aren't safe. So. So twenty twenty-six, we want to do that. We want to build community relationships with businesses through that prevention education. And we want to search out and apply for grants and we're going to constantly do that. And so this isn't a, 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 and I, what I'm doing, this is what we are doing as a department. So all of our firefighters are looking at, you know, they're, they're always constantly sending me emails. Hey, have you seen this? Have you seen that? So we have the entire department really physically looking out for the community. So we're bringing those forward. So the future strategy in place for twenty-seven, we're going to maintain and improve our recruitment and training. That's going to be an ongoing thing. As, as we bring people in, I'm sure there'll be people leaving. There's always a constant churn in the fire service. And so we always have to be looking for that. So in twenty-seven, we're going to, we're going to maintain and we're going to improve that recruitment. We're going to look at if we had a successful recruitment in twenty-six. Great, we'll do the same thing. But if we didn't, what can we change to improve that? So constant continuous improvement on that. We want to evaluate our prevention efforts. Did we get into the businesses that we needed to get into? Are we having good feedback from businesses that, that, that were inspecting? Are, are we having any issues in, in those businesses with fire or anything else? One of the things that we haven't done is a public education program. We have different daycares and things like that within our community. We have senior groups that meet. We just haven't been able to outreach out to them and provide education or training or information to them. Because of staffing, because of time, because of just a lack of structure. We want to do that in twenty-seven. That's a, that's a goal of ours. And we want to examine our ISO rating for improvement because we're going to improve our training. We're going to improve our water supply by having a second tanker. We're going to try and do all the things you can to, to improve that ISO, which will then improve the, the insurance ratings for the community overall. So we want to make sure that we keep doing and reevaluating to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So. Service delivery levels. This has kind of been a topic. I think it's interesting. I shouldn't say it's interesting. I think it's a, I think it's a great topic to bring out there. There are several departments within the metairie who are examining our service levels. What should we be providing? What should we not? So we look at things like EMT versus EMR, medicals versus fire. What do we want to provide? What does that get us? Right now, we're running around two hundred and fifty calls a year. It's not a lot of calls, but it's a significant amount. And what's important about service delivery and, and running medicals is that unfortunately, we don't know what that call is until we get there, right? So someone calls nine-one-one, they explain the emergency best that they can. The dispatcher send what they think is the appropriate resources. And we get there and we find out what that is. If it's a major medical or, or any type of medical emergency, there starts to be a chain of survival. So each link, there's a chain in that survival and each entity within that link or each entity within there is a link in that chain. So Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, EMS, a line of ambulance. The hospital, emergency staff, things like that. Anywhere in that, in that, in that chain, if the link is broken, the chances of survival go down. Okay? And so we want to make sure that we are delivering the service level to the best of our ability and to the best for the citizens. And so we look at things like Barnum. It's a, there's a establishment that has staff on, on at their location. Do we need to be running all these medicals at Barnum? Probably not. We're working on reducing the calls there. We can, we can control that service delivery a little bit. It's a little harder to control the service delivery out in the community because again, we don't know what that emergency is till we get there. We're working with a line of ambulances to do some pre-arrival instructions to see if there's ways that we can cut our calls down that way. And so I think it's important that we don't look at just medical versus fire. Is there a way to cut this for that? When you look at the expense of a fire department running it, the costs are relatively the same regardless we run medical or fire. Um when you look at the expense of a fire department running it, the costs are relatively the same regardless we run medical or fire. The the labor costs are are negligent compared to overall budget. Most of our budget is in equipment, supplies, things like that. It's not in it's not in our response. Um our firefighters are paid on a call. They're only paid when they when they come to a call. Um they are only paid when they train. And so the 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 labor piece of that is is insignificant. Compared to the rest of the budget. So. When you look at E M T versus E M R, um I had to I had to think about. Is it important to be an E M T? Is it important to be uh you know, versus a emergency medical responder, which is emergency medical responder is very, very basic. Um we're talking CPR trained, um some bleeding management and and you know, just really emergency control. Versus E M T, which is more about patient care. And that's really where where we elevate our service delivery when we talk about patient care. People call nine one one. It is the worst day of their life and they don't care who shows up. They just want them to be. Competent, compassionate and caring. Um and our fire department does all of that and it does it very well. And because we're at the E M T level, it it we do it extremely well and we do it professionally. The E M T, the the burden of E M T versus E M R really is insignificant when you look at. A forty hour course versus a hundred and sixty hour course. EMS is EMS is EMS. If I'm bringing in a new firefighter, there isn't anybody who's discouraged necessarily about the E M T. If I tell them, hey. To be a firefighter, you have to fire one, fire two, hazmat ops um and E M T. Okay, where do I sign up? That's what they wanna do. Um nobody is coming to us and saying, uh I just wanna be an E M R, you know, because most new people in the industry. Have no idea what the difference is between the two. And so I think it's very important that that we don't sell ourselves short. Uh E M T versus E M R. Um I did include a letter from from one of our firefighters. And and I I apologize because he just got it to me today. But this was the letter that I included was over a conversation I had with this individual. He's been on the department for seventeen years. Um he was an E M R for all of that time. He decided to to go out and and take us up on getting his E M T. Um and. I haven't experienced E M R versus E M T. I started out as an E M T. So having having someone who's been doing this for seventeen years is an E M R. Go do this E M T. He wasn't excited about doing it, but um the letter itself will explain. How much he got out of that course and how better of a firefighter and a skilled responder he feels. Um going through that that course. And so um I think that letter explains kind of all of that. Uh or encompasses all of that in a whole. So um when we look at service level, we want to balance. Enough activity for our firefighters to be involved, but not too much activity that we're burning them out, right? And so we are gonna work very hard on making sure that we go to the calls that are important and emergent. And the calls that are not, and we don't need to go to, we're gonna try and eliminate those so that we have a good balance between. What we're running to as a fire department and what we're requesting our people to be involved in. So. I hope that answers the question on kind of service delivery. Um the other piece I wanna touch on is. Um the chief's position, paid on call versus part-time versus full-time. Paid on call fire chiefs, um there aren't. Many in the area, especially in Mill County, um Oak Grove. Um and uh and I believe uh Linwood are about the the last of that. Um and so um what you get from a paid on call fire chief is somebody who's available nights and weekends. In between everything else that they have going on. And so, yes, it's a it's a fairly reasonable. Um as far as expense model, um it's you know, much, much cheaper to have a a paid on call fire chief. It's usually somebody who's very experienced, who's been in that department for a long time and rises to that level because they've risen through all the ranks. Um unfortunately, here in in uh now then, we don't have that opportunity to to even promote. Somebody from within to do that. And so that's gonna be a struggle for us. And we're we're. We're probably not gonna be able to be in a position like that for many, many years because it takes a long time to cultivate that kind of leadership. Um so what you have right now is this part-time fire cha- chief model. Where you're paying somebody to be here twenty to thirty hours a week. They're handling the administration. They're handling the the programs. Um the budgeting, um training, kind of encompassing all. Um right now, that seems to be ver- working very well for this department. Um I don't know what this department looks like in the future. And so I can't today tell you that in in two and a half years or three years or four years that. A part-time fire chief is going to be where you need to be. Um not there yet. I don't know what our organization looks like. I don't know what we're gonna be able to build. Out of that organization. Right now, you're kind of in between. So having the 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 part-time fire chief seems to be ver- working very well for this organization. Um do I think that you need to hire a full-time fire chief today? Absolutely not. I think we're 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 doing. What we're doing very well and we're growing this organization. And I've talked. At nauseam about incremental growth. My firefighters hate. Me saying incremental growth because I say it all the time. Um but that's what we're doing here is we're growing this fire department incrementally slowly um from within. And so. You gotta think about this. We started a new fire department in twenty twenty one. Um we are just getting on our feet. Um and we're doing it really, really well. And so we may only have thirteen personnel, but they are thirteen dedicated, highly trained. Highly motivated people. I couldn't I couldn't tell you that this is, these are some of the best people I've ever worked with. In my thirty-seven years in the fire service. I couldn't be prouder of these people. Um and so I think we have a we have a a a great fire department and um and we have a great organization here. So these are where we wanna go. So what I wanted to do was tell or put this slide up on the on the. Um up here to talk about what is the per capita cost? Where do we sit with our neighbors? You know, per capita cost of fire service. We're at sixty-nine dollars for now then. And you can see Oak Grove is seventy-one, St. Francis seventy-five. Um Ramsey's seventy-one, seventy-three. We're right in that ballpark, right? We look at Linwood Township with paid on call fire chief and a pay and Lexington, both those organizations. Not a not a huge population, um but a different budget structure. So Lexington's a very small community. Um obviously, their budget is gonna is gonna pay out to much, much more expensive for uh for them because they're spreading that. Pie a lot thinner. Um and so I would say when in comparison, we're right in the ballpark of everyone else. Um so I don't think we're spending too much and I don't think we're underspending ourselves. Um I think we're right in that ballpark. Um and and again, incremental growth. We're gonna talk about. How we can how we can improve the fire service here um and improve um the city services through that. So. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Chief, I got a question for you. You had said that there's some calls that you may not have to go to. Could you give us an example of what that would look like?
Um I would say people that are in a psychological crisis may not be the best piece of our fire department, right? Not a lot we can do in that situation. Outside of of assisting the deputies or backing up the deputies and something like that, but that really is a a a a B L S ambulance call that we wouldn't have to handle. Um things like that. Um you know. Some of the calls that have been mentioned out in the community are things like, well, do we have to go to a fall? Do we have to go to a broken bone? Again, let's go back to what. What is the call? How was dispatched? What is the information that we know? So just because it comes over as a fall for us. That could be sickable episode. That could be um that could be somebody had a seizure and there's a lot of different translations. And so we don't know till we get there. And so when we look at our our calls, we're gonna try and parcel these out with a line and see if there's a better way for us to. To take out the calls that we definitely don't need to be at. So um I can't fully answer the question. Um because we haven't had a chance to sit down with the line and try to really figure out what they're, how they parcel those calls off.
Just one one more statement. I asked chief to talk about multiple items and he's discussing them just to get everybody up to speed. But the service level is something that's determined from the council.
So absolutely.
It it's just it's not something that's been brought up. So I asked him to talk about service level. We don't have to go down it today, but it's really about the awareness of. You know, we don't have to have a fire department. You could, but we do and we wanna maintain it. So these are some of the things you don't have to do and there's a cost associated with some of them.
Yep.
Um and what the chief described is um what he believes is a very good model for us. So I just wanted to throw that out there for the council.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for chief?
And we've had some conversations about. What new firefighters that have completed training and now then get paid. I I'm trying to recall if if you were going to put some time into doing some research in uh in regards to surrounding communities. What they're paying their paid on call firefighters after completing training.
Yeah, the as far as like a budget, uh or or I'm sorry, wages, what they.
Yeah, with the hourly wages, you know, the well, you know, I think it's great that we have thirteen of the best people that you've ever worked with in your thirty-seven years. Thirteen people isn't a lot.
No, it's not. Absolutely.
So when it comes to recruitment and retention.
Right.
You know, are we? Are we even in the ballpark?
So right now, um I would like to come back with counsel in July um with a. More information on uh our recruitment. And what does that look like? Are we paying enough? Uh you know, are we paying our people enough? Are we? Is there enough incentive to get people in the door? It's hard for me to say, well, this department next door pays this much so that therefore we should be at that same level because. You know, let's take Ramsey for example. They have, you know, thirty thousand people to draw from as the citizen crowd. Um or population and we have forty-five hundred. And so it's much, much different. And so how what's the incentives to to get people to come to come here and do this? We'd have to we have to put some more thought and some more study into that. So I I don't wanna speak off the cuff tonight about that. But that's definitely something on my mind that I would like to bring back to the council. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you, chief.
Appreciate.
So we'll go right into the uh uh the resolution. You can find the number for this.
May I request that the sheriff go first? We can jump in with the attorney at six forty-five?
Yes, can can you do it and it's like two minutes?
I know.
Perfect. Do the best you can. Might have to do the abbreviated version.
I can handle that. Again, good evening. My name is Bill Jacobson. I serve as the chief deputy for the Noak County Sheriff's Office. It's good to be back with you all. I'll briefly cover. Some highlights from the uh from the June, which covers May twenty twenty-five reports. We read barn on a number of times as the chief mentioned, and we are working closely with their staff to try to get those calls down. Nineteen calls to barn on. Thirty-two total calls, nineteen reports, four alarm calls, twenty-four medicals and a few animal calls. You'll see on your report, a large number of calls to bar none. And they sort of detail what what Chief Miller was talking about with mental health crisis calls, medical calls, disorderly calls. Um. The fire department does co respond on quite a few of those. I'll just bring your attention to one. Um five twenty-five uh twenty-five at ten twelve P M, a rather serious assault on staff. Um resulted in a pretty significant law enforcement presence in your community. Um because the assault was rather serious, ended up being a first degree assault. Um where a a staff member was assaulted with a chair. Um and we ultimately located um all the juveniles and they were arrested. Charges varied from first degree assault, third degree riot and theft. Third degree riot is a charge we use anytime there's more than one person that. Works in conjunction um uh in this type of assault. So um that's why you see that charge on there. So whether nor really calls, you'll see some proactive work. Uh deputy made a stop for someone with a Hennepin County warrant. Um we did respond to a shot fired called that ended up being a uh B B gun. You'll see a domestic assault call we responded to on the fourteenth. Um again, uh call where we arrested the suspect in that case. On the fourteenth at eleven fifty-two, we had a stolen vehicle report. Something people don't realize is our deputies are equipped to take uh DNA swabs at scenes now. So. Um he was able to take some DNA swappings of uh of the scene and some possible evidence and we'll send that to our lab for testing. Then uh the last one I'll mention on the nineteenth is we responded to a uh it was basically a vehicle stop. Um we found that uh the driver had revoked plates. Was running with the wrong plates on the vehicle, which they'll do um to try to um keep their registration up to date um when it's been revoked. So. Sorry, very brief today, but um a lot of a lot of activity at Barnon and we're looking closely with their staff to try to get those calls for service style. I'll stand for any questions.
Good in two minutes.
I have a question. I I saw some information on a. A major call for the a barn and facility or a V O A facility, and I believe it's Andover. Are they experiencing there the same magnitude of falls that we are?
That's probably a group home. I don't know the exact call you're talking about, but um. We do have a large number of group homes across our various communities and we are seeing an increase across all of those locations. And in um uh in your neighbors over in East Bethel at um the facility at sixty-five and Viking. Um that's a rather large facility, larger than bar none, and we're dealing with a lot of the same concerns, a lot of the repeated calls and um. Um so it's definitely something that's not limited only to your community. We're seeing it quite a bit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for chief? All right, thank you, sir.
Good to see you all. Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, so we're gonna move on. Uh just due to time, we're gonna jump down to the uh attorney at all sets uh at six forty-five. So Delia, are you gonna put them? There we go. So shi- shifting on the agenda to business item eight. So we're doing time on target with the attorney. Um so it'll adjust our schedule slightly. Well, Mark will turn it over to you, sir.
Perfect. And can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we got you loud and clear.
Very good. So I I think that uh you have me here today, Mr. Mayor, for two issues. Uh the first of which is to speak a little bit on the excessive use of law enforcement services ordinance. The other is to wrap up the personnel policy. Uh so if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, maybe we can just start with the excessive use of law enforcement services ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, sir.
Perfect. So with that, I believe we've received a uh brief memo from the Anoka County Sheriff's Department. Uh it's indicated that the total cost per hour for their response comes down to an average of sixty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. The reason that we had talked about getting this memo is to figure out the fee that should be imposed. Um if we were to uh invoke the ordinance and uh certify the costs for the service charges against a. Landlord or property owner who is propagating a nuisance on their property. We wanted to uh come down to a a solid number so as to not make the ordinance um punitive in nature. Or to punish an individual, but rather it's intended solely to recuperate the costs. Um and it's not intended in any way to deter uh calls to law enforcement. I understand that the sheriff also expressed some possible concerns with liability for the township or dissuading calls. There there is a statute that is on point for this that I had presented to the council before, which is Minnesota statute five oh four B. Point two zero five, uh specifically subdivision three of this ordinance. Uh indicates that um if there are domestic incidences or mental health crises, there um. In no case can be a certification of the costs. However, the subdivision of this ordinance allows for an ordinance that penalizes landlords. Or property owners uh who do not abate uh nuisances uh that are propagated on their property. And gives deference to the city to define what nuisance is in their local ordinance or code. And sorry if I sound just a little bit off. I'm getting a bit of a a back delay, so I'm trying to speak just a little bit slower. Um so I I can hear myself. Okay. Other than that, I I think that addresses kind of two of the concerns that we had, one of which was the cost. Um and what we were going to certify, I would have language that I would propose to be drafted into that final. Um excessive use of law enforcement services ordinance that would set the price at sixty-nine dollars and seventy-six cent. For this year and then to be adjusted accordingly in communication with the sheriff's department. And if anyone is speaking, I cannot hear uh anyone speaking right now.
That's because nobody was speaking. Um, just want to touch base on the exceptions on page one fifty-two. Um, so if you take a look at the exceptions, what would not be included in this? And then if you look at right below that is F is the a process to appeal. Just make sure everybody has read that thoroughly and we have a good understanding. So if it's a medical or mental health emergencies, that's number one under E. Um, this would not be imposed, and then domestic incidents would also not be imposed for this fine.
And Mr. Mayor, I will also say that again, this is. This is where council has discretion as well, right? The council gets to make an evaluation of each instance of conduct and make a determination on a case by case basis.
Which would fall under the appeals for F is what you're stating?
Correct.
So it'll open up to the council for any, any questions on what the attorney has stated here. Mr. Brian, you want just a minute just to review? I read this over and I didn't see any concerns with myself, so. Would we be ready to move to a vote on this? I know we gotta get a motion first, but. Mr. Randall, there is.
Um, I would move that we select a fee of sixty-seven dollars and. Ninety-six, sixty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
I think it's sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Um, to be adjusted as appropriate. For an excessive use of law enforcement service contract, city code violation, services, city code violation to be added. To ordinance uh twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash oh four, so the ordinance can be codified. And added into the city website and enforced.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
Is is there any reason that that fee couldn't just be seventy dollars as opposed to sixty-nine, seventy-six?
I would, I would be a manable to changing that to seventy dollars.
I'll second that. All right, so it's seconded now to seventy dollars. Is there any other discussion? Or can we move to vote? All right, let's move to vote on this. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, uh, Mark, will you take us to the next section, please?
Of course, and I am just pulling up uh my notes from the personnel policy here. I believe the last time we left on the personnel policy, we had a rather. Um, holistic conversation about the personnel policy, but did omit just a few things. Um, so I wanted to take time today to go through and just touch on a few of the items that we had missed. Um, while I pull up my email that detailed that list, does council have access to that list? And did, was that distributed? I had sent an email back maybe the day after the May sixth meeting.
Yes, sir, we do have that.
Okay, very good. And I am just pulling that up here on my end still. I had it up and that email got closed out of. So, one of the first things that I wanted to talk about with respect to this, and I have a a section typo. Uh, the sections that are highlighted in yellow are the sections that uh we omitted to have conversation on. One of them is a section six dash seven, not seven dash seven. It's on page twenty of the policy. Paragraph three, we said that we were going to come back and have a conversation about uh this provision after we had made a determination, or rather the council. Had made a determination on uh the P T O policy. Um, this provision says absences of less than four hours do not require use of paid leave as it's presumed the staff member. Regularly puts in work hours above and beyond the normal eight to five. Uh, the question was, does council wish to regulate those hours and have them logged or leave that language as stand?
Sir, I remember about talking about this specific thing and we were, um, I believe it was council member Swenson that said remove that section, if I remember correctly. No? No?
My recollection is we were.
For discussion.
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor. For exempt employees or all employees?
Exempt.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Swanson.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to leave in as is. I think we can. I mean, I've always trusted my employees when I've been employees and I I think if they gotta come and go for doctor's appointments, I don't feel the need to track hours or. Get doctor's notes or this or that. Um, I trust that our exempt employees are putting in hours above and beyond and they don't get overtime, so. I'm I'm all right leaving it. I think it's sensible.
Any other comments? Will you be in? Okay. So it sounds like we have no more questions on that, Mark.
Perfect. Then we can jump to page twenty-five, section nine dash four. I'm just getting there myself, and that section number might be messed up again. It it might be. Eight dash four. I might have been just one ahead in in my numbering. So it's a provision regarding the use of unaccrued P T O after one year employment. It doesn't appear that there is a a cap on that. Uh, and I was wondering if the council wanted to impose a cap so somebody could not use unlimited unaccrued P T O. Or maybe if I'm misreading it, somebody could. Um, indicate to me otherwise. I just didn't want to leave a carve out that would allow for somebody who's been there for a year to. Take unlimited unaccrued P T O.
I I gotta say, I am not a supporter of using P T O that has not been earned at all. So even at the one-year marker greater, I'm not a fan of that at all. That's what you have P T P T O for. You save your P T O, you use your P T O. So going in the hole is not something that I'm normally accustomed to in the civilian side. I don't know if it's different in the government side, but I'm not a fan of that at all.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with you on that.
Councilor Brian, any comments on that?
I I know this, there was a, there was a lot of discuss, yeah, okay, thanks. I know there's a lot of discussion about this provision, and I think at the time anyway, this was a compromise. I would. I will also be in favor of not allowing unaccrued vacation or or P T O time to be to be used up. I mean. There may be some, some provisions if we want to go back and revisit this to use unpaid time off if if that's, if more time was needed. But I don't know if if we want to go through and re re um. Revote on this entire, this section about how uh vacation gets or P T O would get paid out if it's not accrued.
So I think it was not discussed, and that's why he's bringing it up right now. So I don't think we've had a discussion. Any other comments uh from council member Rainbow or council member Swenson?
Uh, thank you. Um, I would like to ask, we could entertain input from um our interim city administrator Johnson. As to in her time here. Have we had employees that have gone and and he was not accrued P T O?
No, we have not. They've taken it unpaid.
And that would be the normal.
Because it takes a significant amount of time to save up, you know, some hours, so in order to take, you know, a week off. They have to save it or they take it unpaid.
And then I would ask Ms. Johnson, um. Are you comfortable, and I know it's the council's decision, but I do want staff's input. Are you comfortable with us removing that ability to using unaccrued P T O?
Uh, I am. Yeah, it isn't something that we were in favor of. I don't remember why it came up in discussion prior. Um, but I've never worked anywhere that you could use unpaid.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Unearned. I I would, then, Mr. Mayor, I would be in favor of removing the ability to use unearned.
All right, Mark, I think we got our answer on that one.
Excellent. Um, the one more that's uh highlighted in yellow on that list there would be a. Um, sample salary increase policy. Uh, that was down at uh the bottom of the initial draft. Do you have a copy of that sample salary increase policy?
Anybody know if we have a draft of that? Or what page that would be on?
It would, Mr. Mayor, I think the the place that it could be located uh would be in the council packet from May sixth. It was all the way at the bottom. It it wasn't um integrated. It was just a proposed policy. I don't know if council has ability to access that uh briefly.
So Delia is working on pulling that up right now and.
Very good. The the basic premise of it is just um an annual increase to um. For cost of living adjustment to combat inflation. It's relatively standard in workplaces to where you can. Set um, you know, a a rate that you will have all salaries increased. It's something that is not in the personnel policy as stand. And was just curious if it is something that the council would want to entertain, um, given I've seen it i- in other places. Totally a policy call by the council.
Councilmember Brian.
Turn on my mic. I don't, I I guess, you know, we had this discussion last year regarding if we're gonna have a set. Cost of living or not, and I know in several past years, we've, I I know last year we kind of combined merit as well of cost of living, so I don't necessarily want to. Have a um in place because that rate could adjust a set policy of this is exactly what people are going to be getting because. Um, salaries could be, could be addressed and cost of living can change, and I'd rather have a a set pool. I personally would rather have a set pool that can be used for raises um across the, across our entire staff instead of. Um, having a specific cost of living adjustment. So that provides an ample, um, in theory, uh more money in the pool that can be spread out to compensate our employees.
So that your recommendation is something once a year, the council would address and determine what that's going to be? And and I'm fine with that. I I don't need anything set by a policy on what that that should be. Uh, we can review the budget. What month does that take place for our employees? For our staff?
Uh, the. Reviews are all done in December. And then the pay would take effect January one, so we'll talk about it during the budgeting cycle. And then I believe what happened last year is they just took a dollar amounts. And then Scott sat down and kind of went through and kind of just determined who who gets what on that.
So I I'm definitely okay. Anybody else want to make any comments on this one? So it'll be determined by the council every year. We don't need to set for a cost of living. Okay, back to you, Mark.
Okay, very good. Uh, the last thing that I would um think about that I didn't put in this email or note. Um, but it was a thought that I had earlier on was with respect to uh employees who um. Work after expected hours or before expected hours. If those employees, I know comp time. Is not a part of the policy and that's been decided on, but if there is any flex time component um that the council would wish to entertain. I if somebody works uh three hours in the evening, could they come in three hours later the next day? You could condition that upon supervisor approval, whatever you, whatever you may wish. Um, but is that something that council wants to entertain for the final draft of the personnel policy?
Or Swanson?
Yeah, I think that sounds like a sensible policy, because I think that actually saves us money. It's paying time and a half for overtime for those after hours. Hours versus straight time, time off the next day of three hours or whenever. So I think it actually saves us money and probably. You know, even though it, you know, maybe nets the employee less, you know, they probably would appreciate that too. So sort of seems like a win-win to me.
Can I, can I ask Ms. Johnson to give an example of uh taking care of the council meetings? Um, because it's probably what's most applicable.
It is most applicable here. Let's take Ms. Stokel, for example. She's gonna be here past hour. She did come in not till ten o'clock today instead of nine o'clock. Um, but she's still gonna be over her eight-hour threshold. So if she wants to come in tomorrow, little bit later, or she wants to leave a little bit earlier. Um, I don't have any kind of problem with that. Um, the times when it would not come into play, I don't believe is like, um, when you have to work a Saturday. Uh, potentially, um, or if we have some deadlines that have to get meet. Um, depending upon their supervisor, they might say, no, no, no flex time this week because we need to get this project done.
So just a question, would it be only applicable for the staff in the office and not applicable to public works?
Uh, no, it has been applicable as well to public works. Um, the days that I don't, I believe that it isn't is like on the Saturdays when they have to go. Cut down some trees that that went down in the storm or over snowing, you know, time that's um. Basically on the weekends away from their family versus um being out plowing until seven o'clock at night and then come in early. I do know that Joe has done a really good job managing that for when we have a big sto- snowstorm. You know, he'll send the guys home at noon and tell them to take a nap if we plan on, you know, snow plowing all night. Um, so when Mark and I were talking about this, it's just something that we wanted to make sure is acceptable because the comp time was removed. And I just wanted to make sure that council was, you know, okay with them doing that.
Uh, no, I was just actually. Uh, Ms. Johnson touched on something that I was gonna say that Mr. Glaze has a, has a history of managing that. When storms are coming in, so.
I think the other thing is to look at is this should be pre-planned events, meaning we know we have a council meeting. It should be not. Hey, I woke up late today. I want to flex my time two hours. So you still operate off your set schedule. And it's for pre-planned events and pre-planned events only. Is there a comp time or flex time? I don't know what the proper term is. Um, but it's to help manage, so we don't have as much overtime. So I would support it as long as it's pre-planned events that are discussed with the supervisor approved.
And um also in the circumstance, if somebody doesn't have enough P T O, they decide to work. Four, nine hours so they could, they can leave at noon on Friday or something like that if it's approved by a supervisor.
I'm less inclined with that explanation to vote for something like this, because then you're shifting your your set hours.
Okay.
So it it shouldn't be the, I want the office cleared out on Friday and everybody works additional hours, so the office closes at noon. That that would be.
And the supervisors wouldn't allow that to happen. It's, you know, different circumstances.
It should be pre-planned events for city events that are take place, and it could be for plowing, absolutely, it could be used for that, but it definitely to cover the city council meetings, but not to leave early on Friday. That would not be the example that I would include include in here at all. Councilman Rainbow.
Um, I agree with having the ability to do flex time. I mean, at our meeting last week, we scheduled. I think there were four budget meetings. Um, that are gonna affect our staff's evening hours. We never asked them, are you available, excuse me, are you available these evenings? How does this affect you? And um, so I think the avail- the availability of doing flex time is important. Um, in the summer for public works, our parks are highly used in the summer. And if you wait until Monday morning to come empty the garbage, they are overflowing, and we have had complaints over the years. That our garbage is full um over the weekends in the two different parks. And so if um public works is able to flex some hours there. That um we can service our residents and service, keep our parks clean during the weekends, it's holiday hours. Um, I I think that's very important to have for them, so I'm in favor of it. From Mr. Mayor.
All all pre-planned events is what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Right, and I would like to give an example of that is that they did just do that last weekend with one of the seasonal employees. He cut his hours short during the week so that he could go out on Saturday and Sunday because the parks were very booked up.
I think that's a great example. All right, any other discussion on that? Do we need to do a vote on it? Or is everybody in favor of what we just talked about?
Mr. Mayor, before.
Controlled flex time?
Before the council moves to a vote, I just want to be clear on some. Before the council moves to a vote, I just want to be clear on some language. You keep using the phrase pre-planned, which I I think I have a good understanding of what it is to draft language with respect to that. Um, snow plowing, though, to me, does, you know, it's something that you all said would qualify, if I'm hearing correct. That to me doesn't appear to be pre-planned. So are there any other carve-outs aside from snow plowing? Uh, that are not pre-planned that you would want to be contemplated, or is it just the plowing?
Well, here's a thought for regulating it. I mean, maybe we just open it up to all after hours and before af- before hours or weekend events. Um, where staff is requested or, you know, demanded to stay late. And then maybe up to the discretion of their supervisor, whether to offer it at the time as flex time based on what's going on that week or the next week. Or to, you know, offer it as overtime. Could we do that at the discretion of the supervisor based on, you know, that week's needs? Um, and sort of let them handle that? Is that feasible?
So needs of the city, which you're basically stating, needs of the city.
Yeah.
Is it, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbow.
An- another instance with public work is if we have a storm come through and trees are down, that's not a pre-planned. Maybe Mother Nature probably planned it, but we didn't.
That's all. When it comes to public works, it probably can't use the term pre-planned because we don't know when storms, snowstorms or severe weather's coming through. But maybe it's coordinated or planned, maybe it's not pre-planned but planned. And it's basically trying to eliminate the willy-nilly of, hey, I want to leave early on Friday. If I flex and stay an hour late, that's the whole goal, not to do it. So does that make more sense?
It does, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Run.
Yeah, it's more or less base, it can be based on job, the job description of public works that in in that the public works is necessary to be available for weather emergencies, whatever it is, and that that would be included. That helps.
It does help. Okay, sir, back to you. Is there anything else for discussion?
No, Mr. Mayor, this faster than last time. This is great.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Glazer, go ahead.
I would like to address um the language that was added for the purposes of calculating overtime eligibility, any holiday hours or PTO hours used during a work week will count for the total hours worked.
What page are you in, sir?
Um, so I'm, I'm looking at the page one fifty-five. Um, this was actually, even though we talked about it, this is an item that should have been highlighted. It's, it should not have been put into the working draft of the policy. Um, as, as stated in the minutes that we just approved earlier this evening and going back to the um, the video, uh, the YouTube video from that meeting. Um, while uh Councilmember Swenson made a motion to add that language to the working draft. That was rescinded and should not actually be in the working draft. Um, I think we need some more conversation around how uh overtime is calculated. Um, I'm not, a- and I'm gonna state it again, I stated it at that meeting. Um, made multiple objections that um for uh administrative staff. Um, overtime should continue to be calculated only on uh when there's more than forty hours worked in a work week. Um, we run into a um, a oh, what was the word that I wanted to use? Um, it it's, it's not on it turns out to be not unlike the policy that you were not in favor of, Mr. Mayor, and that's calculating overtime um, on anything in excess of eight hours in a working day. Um, and that being said, um, Councilmember Rainville made a remark in regards to public works. I think we do need to take a look at how public works is paid on emergency basis. But I, what I would like to do is I would like to revert the working dra- there, the policy back to what we previously had, that overtime is calculated on a forty-hour work week, has to be forty hours worked. Um, and then I would like to um propose and make a motion that we approach the Minnesota Association of Small Cities to actually do a survey with specific questions. And reach out, have them reach out to the, um, I think it's over seven hundred member cities to inquire as to what their overtime policy is in regards to public works.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Uh, thank you. I I understand Councilmember Glazer's concerns. My concerns are, and I will go back to what I just said. We just, um, yes, we approve flex time. That doesn't mean that they're always going to be able to take flex time. We schedule for budget meetings. Not asking any of the staff, whether they have, whether it's a uh holiday week, whether they have pre pa- pre-planned time off. And now we're penalizing them because we have scheduled meetings in a week where it's either a holiday or they have time off, and we never took consideration of what their schedule was that week. And so we're penalizing. I did go through and I wish I would have brought it with me um back to, I think it was October or November of twenty-three of how many extra meetings we had. Um, I am going to look at time cards, as I mentioned before, um, ask staff to assist me with looking at time cards to see how many of those weeks where we had those extra meetings, were our employees penalized by having to be at a meeting during a week that was either a holiday or they had time off scheduled. Um, I, I just don't believe that's fair to our employees to do that. So I'm gonna continue with that research based on what has occurred within our city. Um, yes, public works. A- a- and I also don't want to treat our public works different than our administrative staff. That can create conflict between them. Um, and so I think we need to have a policy that covers everyone.
Mr. Mayor. I've never worked anyplace in the pu- in the private sector where I was paid overtime unless I actually worked forty hours. And and those, those hours could vary in a similar situation. As an e- as an example to whether it's fair to have a different structure for public works versus administrative staff. Canexus Energy is a perfect example. The um, the line crews who are paid hourly. Their pay structure is totally different than um professional staff. Whether you're, whether you're hourly or whether your salary, and that, that occurs in industries all over the place. So while I would like to be uh we, we ju- we can't, I can't think of it as just a fairness thing. You, you know, so in regards to public works, sometimes we're asking those folks to and it doesn't happen very often, but we, we maybe have a culver failure. We don't have uh city sore in water, so we very, we're not gonna have the you know, the type of issues that um a city like Elk River might have. We're asking them, we're asking them to come in in the middle of the night on a weekend. Um, or maybe on an emergency after they've already worked an eight-hour day. I, I can totally see setting up something, a carve-out for public works. But I, as far as the, the administrative staff, I'm just not in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Swenson.
I'm inclined to agree with Councilwoman Rainville. Um, I I think there are plenty of employers out there that do pay for um overtime for hours worked and that hours worked include PTO and holidays. Um, you know, this is not going to apply to any exempt employees, so um, you know, I, I imagine, you know, whatever we end up with as head of our city office, whoever, and what kind of position that's going to be exempt. And so there's only a couple city staff that it applies to, and it really is just about those evening meetings. I don't think there really is any other opportunity. You, you know, where there are instances where they're gonna be working where that overtime would come into play. And I think it's, I mean, I think it's reasonable. If there's a Monday holiday and they're asked to stay late on Thursday, but they're getting paid straight time. It just, it, it doesn't sit right with me. And I think, I think really the only concern I would have with this is if somebody did gain the system somehow. And I, I think that can be addressed by, it, you know, supervisors or even us. If, if we need to review it here and see y- you know, what this ended up doing. I think the effect on our budget is gonna be extremely negligible. I, I would imagine there are very few hours where this would come into play. Um, and I just, I do see it as a matter of fairness um to sort of not punish our staff over um, you know, working beyond normal hours.
Councilmember Brian, do you have anything?
Just good to we, we've come to an understanding when it talks about meetings that there's been plenty of times where it's like, oh, we have staff on vacation, so we, we're gonna have to reschedule that meeting. So then we have been taking staff's time a bit into account when, when it, when, as far as planning meetings. And if there was ever any um, exception where, where staff was not available or, or um, would that they couldn't cover the meeting, I would have, I would expect that there would be a mention to go, you know what? W- weren't I able to have, that's a, a conglomeration and, and discussion for us that all of us aren't available to have a meeting that night. So if staff's not available and we need to reschedule it, then we reschedule it be- based on that. We've done that before. So I don't see where, where that would be, would that necessarily would be an issue.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Can, can I, let me restate something real quick. Um, so two things on this. Uh, Councilmember Glazer brought up, he said, hey, I would like to get some data, and I think data will help us with this. One, I think the input from Minnesota Small Cities can help us get a better understanding. And the other thing is the impact to the city. I think that would be data that would be very helpful to continue this discussion. Instead of keep going back and forth. Let's use the data that we have. We just don't have it in front of us. Um, so my recommendation is let's shelf this portion. Let's move forward with approving the rest of this minus this particular spot. Uh, and we can come back and address this in, in a month when we get the necessary data, instead of going back and forth.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Would that be all right?
I, 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 Mr. Mayor, I agree. Um, I would just say next week is a prime example of, um, Thursday is Juneteenth, the office is closed. But we have our public hearing on June seventeen. So whatever hours um staff is here during that public hearing. They are gonna get straight time for that, even though it is more than eight hours in a day.
So I would ask you to bring your examples back and, and, and good arguments back and forth. The good thing is we had a good professional conversation. Let's shelf that portion and move. So Mark, I'm turning it back over to you. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed before we can vote on this?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
So it's my, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding, we're taking that language out, reverting it back to what it was.
Per your request, because it was supposed to be taken out.
A- and then we will, as a, as a council, we will come up with the, the questions that we want to ask the Minnesota Association of Small Cities to send out a survey.
We can ask those questions, yep. Bring the data to support the argument from both directions, and we'll have another professional conversation. And, but yes, it was supposed to be reverted back. I know you asked for that to be rescinded. I remember that. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you for that clarification. My apologies.
Very good. All right. So approval of the personnel policy minus, we'll call it, I don't even know what to call it. It's section six-six. Is it six-six? I was on page one fifty-five and that's different. So it's six-six. So let's get that specifically called out.
Page one seventy-four, exactly.
Thank you.
Referring to.
Yes, that's the one I needed. Page one seventy-four, six-six overtime pay, and it says second second paragraph, is that correct? Hold on, I gotta find the right one.
We just revert that whole section to our existing policy and we can
It's actually the pair, the first paragraph on page one seventy-five.
That's where I was tracking. Okay, so we're gonna prove everything but the first paragraph on one seventy-five. So let's find the anybody know where the uh RCA is for this, mother? What's that, man? All right, so it's somebody like to move forward with a motion uh on page two nineteen for the personnel policy. All right, I'll move forward with the motion. Um, I will move uh with, to approve the motion to uh approve the resolution adopting a personnel policy dated March twenty twenty-five. And I think that's all the information that we have for that. It's resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five XX. And the, we're gonna rescind on page one seventy-five, which is the top paragraph talking about overtime. Other than that, I believe the that is my motion. But anybody like to second that?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Glazer. Any other discussion? Okay, moving to vote. All those in favor of approving the personnel policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we have a ninety-nine percent personnel policy done. We'll come back and finish that last piece up. Councilmember Rainville.
So then but we need a motion to move forward with staff direction to contact the legal small cities. Um, but we as council members need to su- submit our questions that we would like to staff so that they can move that um, from, provide those to the small cities.
I'll, I'll second that. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
But, oh, we, we need a timeframe. So, um, I would say, um if we could have, today is June tenth. If we could have those questions to staff by June eighteen. So that staff has time prior to the July eighth council meeting to be able to contact those city, that association, those cities through that association and get that input for the July eighth meeting.
So some, uh, okay for everybody, June eighteenth. Okay, so you rescinded your motion, you added the, a due date, questions to the city. I seconded your motion. I'm gonna resecond it. Are we ready to vote or any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you for putting a timeline on that. Okay, so we are complete uh with attorney office, is that correct? Thank you, sir, for attending via online.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so now we are jumping back to number four. I think it's four C is where we left off. Thank you. Where are chief three of us? Chief two or three of us? Um, let's open this up for just discussion. So we got a presentation from Chief Miller talking about the things that he's accomplished, his long-term plan. Um, talked a little bit about the emergency operation plan. I did uh give him some feedback that we've got some gaps in that emergency operation plan and something we're, worth to tighten up. Um, and he said he would take a look at that. Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Glazer.
If somebody could just, you know, help me understand the, the two and a half year timeframe, is that because of the, the overall strategic plan that he has for the fire department? And
That's a great question.
We as a city feel that that's appropriate. Or too long, you know, it's a year and a half. Um, so that's you know, that's a question I have.
I, I definitely can provide input on that. So one of the questions, the same question I asked for is why two and a half years? Does that make sense for our city? It can be reduced, bottom line. But so what, if you look at our our fire department, they're only a couple years old, so four years old. So one of the things is two and a half year contract, that is bring stability to it. And that's one of the goals we want to do is grow, grow within incremental growth, as you talked about, but bring that stability to the fire department. So I think that's why the two and a half years was proposed. I certainly didn't propose that. I'm gonna tell you that. Um, but I believe that's why it was proposed. That makes sense?
Yeah, it does.
So we could talk, if you wanted to say, hey, this is up for discussion to say, I would rather approve a one year, could be a two year, whatever the case is. This is complete open discussion. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Swenson.
Um, I, I think in light of the, the rationale behind the two and a half years and the stability for the fire department and allowing the, the members of the fire department, you know, that knowledge and reassurance that the chief and his plan is gonna be there for the next two and a half years along with his sort of six-month trial period, job interview. I mean, he's been here for a while and proven that he has good ideas and that he provides good leadership. I, I would be comfortable with the two and a half years. I do understand the concerns. It is sort of a long period. But I, I think it, you know, given the, the need for stability and and uh I guess development within the fire department, given its newness, I, I do think it's prob- I think it's appropriate. That would be mine.
Just be aware that if you look at page one twenty-three, um we have the ability to part ways with the thirty-day thirty-day notice, well, Chief Miller does. Um let's read the
It doesn't, and, and, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't cost us anything if you read that paragraph, if, if we choose to part ways. You know, whether, whether the chief decides to leave or whether
So that it is an option, just say you sign up for two and a half years. So that it is an option, just say you sign up for two and a half years. It can, uh, Councilmember Rainbow, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, I I believe based on the presentations that Chief Miller has provided us and prior to tonight and the information he's provided to to us tonight, I don't see two and a half years as being um a stretch as to what needs to be done, especially the issue of developing leadership within our rank and file firefighters. Um, and the issue of doing the, having a fire inspection program, developing that, getting that started. Um, the issue of retention of of recruitment and attention retention of firefighters. I don't see that two and a half years is is in a big and exorbitant amount of time. I think that he's gonna need every minute of that to do that. If we find and if he reports to us that, hey, things are really going well and we can maybe bump or backwards some of those timeframes, we can address it and we have that ability in the contract. But I think that we cut ourselves short and we do a disservice to our firefighters to not give them some long-term stability. That's something that they haven't had since we have um determined that now then is going to have a fire department. And recruitment, um, they're gonna look to what is your management and is your management stable? And um, I think by approving a two and a half year contract, that shows uh the council commitment that that we want stability for our firefighters, our fire department and our firefighters, which then benefits our residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Glazer.
And just as a observation, there were only three firefighters in the room this evening, but he obviously has a a good rapport.
I'd just make a comment. I did make a few phone calls to firefighters last night just to get a sampling, you know, more of a statistic sampling. It was a little, a small population. Uh, but both reported good working relationship, appreciated the leadership. Um, and he's, they said chief is all in, all in on now then. She wouldn't know he's a Brooklyn part firefighter. He would think he's the full-time chief here. Um, so that's some of the feedback from the fire department, but it was very positive. Um, but I did, I did sample with two firefighters. I do wanna bring up the wage, because the wage has been a concern. Um let's talk about eleven fifty, eleven hundred fifty dollars a week, um, looking at twenty twenty-six, going up to twelve hundred dollars a week. So what the chief provided us, doesn't have a page number on it, but it's per capita cost. There's not a dollar sign, but so he did clarify it was cost um, for resident, and he's got I'm assuming this is the chief's cost. Should've asked him for clarification on it. So he's got us at sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, and I I'm assuming that's per resident, just to cover the chief's cost. Was that how you interpret this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you look, he's got the, what kind of fire chief they have, and that is the number.
Right, so.
That he explained though. And if I could, just address the two and a half years as well. Is um, with the history of the city and the length of time it takes to find and hire somebody and then have the overlapping time um, with the chief to make that transition. I I think the two and a half years is quite um reasonable. Along with um, tonight to address Mr. Glazer's or Councilmember Glazer's comments about the firefighters here. Um, there were more here and then they got a fire call. And they headed out.
Do you want comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
I'm I'm, I guess there, I would say there should certainly be some clarification of what this number means, because as I understand it, Oak Grove has a larger population and their their chief is is um overall paid less. So I don't, I think there may need to be some clarification of what that number means.
Um, they have they have twice, almost twice the population. They're at ninety-one hundred. They were at forty-six, thirty-six up the last census I see that came in the mail. So almost twice the population. Again, I I haven't validated any of these numbers you've represented, this first time I've seen it. But the the one thing that has been brought up to me by residents is the cost. It's expensive. But if you look at, I'm gonna say a complete value proposition, where if we bring stability to our fire department, we maintain our fire department. The question is, does that value that we're paying, is it a a scenario where it's worth paying that cost? And it's been a little bit of my struggle. I talked to the chief, I said, can can you take a reduction in cost? He wasn't really interested in doing that. But I did ask him that directly because it's expensive. It's one of our largest, larger expenses that we have at the city. You know, the police department's the largest, but um, so is that service that we get from him worth that value or that cost? And that's the question that are really determine the vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Swenson.
How did we come up with that weekly salary for his, you know, set hours?
I think we'd have to ask Councilmember Brian or Rainbow, because it was before.
I, if memory serves me, um, we looked at what other cities were paying, but yet the information we had provided to us was not complete. Um, there was not a uh apples-to-apples comparison of of duties, anything like that. Um, but we felt that that was a a an appropriate wage, um, given the fact that we are a new department, um, I get a twenty-one. Um, and since twenty-one, we have been in a continual transition. So there is a lot of um a lot of policy building, a lot of um uh, team building, there's a lot of things that he's doing for that money. I'm comfortable in paying him that money. He brings us thirty-seven years of experience. Um, I think he's done a wonderful job in what he has done so far, um, especially on a part-time basis. And um, you, in order to draw people and good quality people, um, they need to be compensated. Um, and I think that's a fair compensation. When you look at Oak Grove, St. Francis, Ramsey, Oak River, um, the the other Linwood, Lexington, those are all established fire departments. So that chief maybe doesn't have to take on as big of a leadership role or a role of determining the, how the department is going to be run because they have internal management, higher up firefighters that are more experienced. He said we have a, you know, three-year average. Um, you don't get that experience in a three-year-old or three, not three-year-old, excuse me, three-year firefighter unless maybe that firefighter has come from another department. Um, but it seems like a lot of what we're getting are our new fresh Aquil Street recruits. So I I'm comfortable with that dollar amount. Um so I think it's.
Councilmember Swenson.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I I totally agree with uh what Councilwoman Rainbow said. And as she was talking, it just caused me to think more. And I I do think we have a a really good chief and he's got a good plan, good leadership, everything. And I just, I now I'm reassured that at least that that weekly salary was based on some statistics, you know, if you're not an economist in here, you know, nailing it down exactly, as long as it was based on something and it wasn't just some arbitrary figure, I am comfortable with that. Um.
Mr. Mayor. It was an arbitrary figure at the end. Um, we, with the information we have, yes, it was kind of varying ba- there, based on whether it was um paid on call or in different communities had different, different amounts. Um, the initial amount that we was proposed was considerably lower. Um, but at the time, it was brought to our attention that there was the potential of that's, um, there was a potential for for a state law that required um exempt employees, even if they were part-time, to have a minimum salary. So when this was proposed, that that arbitrary amount was used. So that arbitrary amount was higher than what we originally talked about um having for our part-time chief. So that arbit- so that's, that's, so the number that's in there is is pretty much an arbitrary amount that was basically set that if you have an exempt position at part-time. But that that policy law did not go through. So that does not have to be in board.
Councilmember Glazer.
And that 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 state policy didn't go in board because a federal court of Texas uh ruled on the case and the the threshold for um part-time exempt employees remained at, it's a little over, it's around thirty-three thousand dollars a year. So it was gonna increase from thirty-three thousand to forty-something and then and then up to fifty-something. That's, and that's why the council and there, if we go back to the two minutes, um, and previous meeting packets, there was actually conversation that involved Attorney Ruby um, in regards to uh why we chose, why the city chose that uh that so.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Can I add one more piece here real quick?
Well, and and I'm not, the the one thing that that I do wanna say is is I recognize chiefs the years of uh experience that he has, what he brings to the table. So I I don't wanna, I I don't wanna short him on that. Um, but I I just, you know, want us to have all the facts and um be able to answer the residents that are asking about the cost of this.
Just one comment. So we also pay payroll. So I asked Natalie, take a look at this. So this is an uh an additional fee of almost, it's a little over ten thousand. Make sure I get correct statistics that we're paying payroll on top of the wage. So it's not a, just a straight sixty thousand. It's a little bit short of sixty right now, but starting in twenty twenty-six, it would be sixty thousand and twelve hundred a week. But we have a payroll on top of it, which is ten thousand. So you gotta look at, just like if you're starting a new job, you're looking at the entire package. That's what we're paying for. So we're really at seventy thousand. So there there is an expense. This is not coming cheap.
Mr. Mayor.
Alright, I think Councilmember Rainbow is next.
Uh, I would just say that if 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 we choose and and council majority vote um makes the determination. Um, but if we choose to offer him less and he says no, what do we do Ju- July first? Because his contract is over the thirtieth, and if he doesn't extend it, then we have nothing on June, July first.
I'm not suggesting that's the best.
Okay, but I that that's a consequence of it, and I don't mean it as a scare tactic.
I just need to make sure every council member understands the total cost that we're paying and what the value is. Councilmember Swenson.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, you know, his his contract says twenty to thirty hours a week, even assuming he only works twenty hours a week. I mean, that would, you know, to to get a full-time chief's equivalent salary, you just double what he gets. And I think a full-time chief is a mid-six figure job. And so I I I I don't know that we can find a part-time chief for less than that. I mean, we could go paid-on-call chief, I guess. I don't know what that kind of pay looks like. But as far as a a half-time chief, and I I suspect he's working more than twenty hours a week with getting the department organized, although I don't know that for certain. So I I think maybe we might even be getting a deal on when when you consider just half a chief at half a salary. So you know.
He's being paid for twenty hours, but he's really putting in thirty.
What I'm hearing, it, yeah, I mean, if he is, because the contractor, something in here says twenty to thirty hours a week. But even if he's working that minimum twenty hours a week, I still think it's a sensible wage. Um, because a full-time chief would just be double that, which would be, you know, a hundred and twenty something. And I I I suspect, and just based on a quick Google search, uh, that most chiefs are paid more than that. I mean, I understand we have a small town, it's not Minneapolis or something, but I, again, I I think he's he's good fit, and I'm willing to pay. And I don't think we're paying a premium. I think we're just paying a reasonable price.
Is the payroll that we're paying, if it was full-time, do we pay that same amount of payroll? Or is that doubled because he gets more hours?
It is a required by the state of what that amount is.
Okay.
So that's it. Um, I would like to add that he did just text me back and he said it's for the whole department. So that per capita is for the entire department's budget.
Interesting. I did not know that. So it's great. Thank you for.
And one other thing too, to kind of address what you were saying. Um, I can confirm that he is working more than the, you know, twenty hours a week. Um, he tries to work about twenty-seven. He checks with him with me all the time and he keeps a couple of hours to be able to make it to calls. Um, now there is time that he's working at home and sending me things after hours as well. So I would agree with Mr. Councilmember Swenson that we're probably getting more than what the contract is stating.
Any other questions or statements?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Natalie, if you can help me, did I, did I read or did I dream? That there was something about the the issue of the title and affecting Kara? If we dropped the interim and he was just fire chief, you must have been having a dream. Okay, alright, that's fine, because I can't find it right now, but I had that in my mind. Alright, thank you for clarifying.
Councilmember Brian did wanna drop the interim, if we are going to move forward with this.
I think that should be part of the process. If that's the case, or a- and that, is there any other recommendations to reduce the time or are we okay with the two and a half years?
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with two and a half years and the salary as is.
Okay. Any other comments, uh, Councilwoman Ryan or Councilmember Glazer? Or can we move to vote? Sounds like we can move it to a vote. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
I I would move that the council approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash XX um extending the contract agreement with Robert Miller until December thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven as fire chief slash emergency manager.
I'll second that. Hey, we will move it to, on page one twenty-seven is where you're reading?
Yes.
Alright, we'll move it to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we no longer have an interim chief, we have a chief Miller. Okay, we are back to, we're on old business now. Old business number nine, is that what everybody's checking?
Number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, skip seven, which is administrator update. I get too many lines on my paper. So we turn it over to Ms. Johnson.
Alright, so as of actually today, we actually have eleven applications for that receptionist um front desk position. I have not looked at any of them at this point, but I will next week after I get back. Um, one thing that we did not discuss was a hiring committee. Um, in the past, one or two council members have been involved in a, in the process. Um, I guess what I'm asking then is what is the process that this council wants to use? Um.
Maybe maybe ask, does anybody wanna volunteer to be on the hiring committee? Anybody has any timer that would like to volunteer?
I'm just was look, going back and looking at the days. So I just wanna, at least, please, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just at least wanna make it available and open that if council members are available, that they can be, they can attend the interviews and and at least participate to get a a heads up. I mean, I know I can't go every single time, but um it would be nice to, you know, ma- man, maybe if it's not the first interviews, be involved in in the second if there aren't any, and and just to at least have that flexibility that if two council members um want to be able to, are able to participate, that they can at least be there and either ask questions or sit in and and get information about the staff that we're hiring.
I think that's a a fantastic comment, that it should be available as long as they wanna participate. So June twenty-third to June twenty-fourth. Um, what if no council members have availability? We move forward with the hiring process, um, and you guys do the interview? And then you bring that recommendation forward?
Um, that's what I need approval for, if that was you're looking for.
Councilmember Swenson.
Yeah, I I trust the Ms. Johnson to do the interview process and make a decision on a, a, you know, front desk person. If it's a a bigger position, you know, perhaps it'd be appropriate to, you know, insist on council involvement, but for a a staff person like that, I I think she has that more than handled, and I would defer to her judgment. But I would also agree with Councilman Brian, that if someone is available, that we'd be able to pop in there and
So would you put the meeting invite out there? And it's, there just can't be any more than two council members on it, that's all.
Correct. So I do have the dates that I'd like to do it, if it works out well, for the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, with a second interview on the thirtieth. So if anybody is interested as well, please um send me a little note just to make sure, I'll make sure that you're on the invite.
Are you good, is the plan to narrow the field down to two or three for the thirtieth, or what's the plan for the thirtieth?
That is my hope. I will go through and score them um first and see who hits the top and then we'll decide how many uh I should be interviewing based upon how many meet the qualifications. And then we would do the interviews and then I would come back for a second if there's more than one candidate that fits every.
Maybe top two come back, or maybe top three, whatever the case is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Glazer.
Would council be given the opportunity to review uh applications, just like we were given the opportunity to review applications of seasonal employees? Those those applications were in the packet.
Absolutely, that's what they're interested in.
If you were to review applications, buddy, you go, you go right ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Um, just to clarify, to Councilmember Glazer, are you talking all eleven applications or just as she, after Um, just to clarify, to Councilmember Glazer, are you talking all eleven applications, or just as she, after she has scored them, just so now?
I I guess I'd be willing just to take the, after they've been scored.
Okay.
Yeah, because obviously there's gonna be some that. Don't fit the. The bill.
And and Mr. Mayor and Ms. Johnson, I am, I I would be interested in in sitting in on them. I just, I have commitments for the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, however, the timeframes on those have not been determined yet.
They have not, because I'm not sure.
No, I meant. No, I just, um, I have, I have a gig that is gonna be twenty-third and twenty-fourth, but I don't know the timeframe, once I know. Um, I mean, if I am, and if I'm just an observer, that's fine too, so. Uh we at one time, as a council, I had provided a a resolution um allowing. Staff to go out and look at um. Bringing in. An expertise based on what the hiring was, providing that, bringing that person in. Wouldn't cost the city any money, that it didn't pass, um but if Natalie would counsel, allow Natalie, if she feels necessary. If she can't get two council members to come in on it, um. Would she be willing, would we be a lot, willing to allow her to bring in maybe another clerk or administrator for a num, from another city? That has experience with hiring uh receptionist-type positions, if that's something Natalie feels she needs. That's fine.
I I can't speak for anybody else.
Help her if she, if we can't, yeah, this is.
Would there be a concern from the coun- uh from the council if if she did that? So another city's clerk would come over and help in the interview process, it's what the request is, be okay with that?
Not costing the city money, huh?
And and that was, that was the qualifier, doesn't cost the city money, just, okay.
So that leave that up to Natalie.
Doesn't sound like you're gonna get two council members, but it's possible.
Okay, you, um the next item that I also added was nineteen-nine, that came up. Um just recently, because the Lions reached out, this is normally an event that the Lions have put together. Um, the city really hasn't been involved with it much, um. With everything that's happened in the city, I think it would be a really good idea for the city to participate in nineteen unite. Um, I would like to be able to have council members there, I would um love to move forward with this. Um, we had a conversation with Comcast, they said they'd be willing to help with some of the sponsorship, um the Lions would still provide. Some of their, I think they did hot dogs and chips before, um the fire department would still come. We would be able to um hopefully do a few other things, maybe, you know, and get some volunteers to base paint or. Do something to bring the community together rather than division and. Um, I did put in a request to the sheriff's department for a helicopter to land for us. Um because Saint Francis always gets that, um I don't know if we'll get it or not yet, Laura has not gotten back to me. Um but I was just looking for council approval to move forward with this plan and be able to kinda count on. At least a few of you to be there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Yeah, I mean, I I I know in the past, um the mayor and councilmember Rainville and myself have have tended at the night for unite. And have actually traveled around the city and visited uh uh different neighborhoods that have had that same event, so, yeah, I don't think that would be an issue. And I would um uh welcome the the Nowland Lions to be able to to help out and set up, I think, just last year, it was in just a matter of a. Staffing issue and having enough volunteers to do it.
Yeah.
And if that's something that we're able to help out with, and we can partner with the Lions, that would be a wonderful, wonderful thing for the city to do. Even, I I mean, it's it's even, it's just showing up, I know the sheriffs had been, you know, the sheriff has been there, and the fire department had everything open up and whatever else. So, yeah, there's nothing wrong with that.
What is the cost of the city, that's one thing it doesn't say, is there any cost?
No, I I don't know yet, I'm thinking that it's not gonna be a whole heck of a lot, I was thinking, you know, um some staff would volunteer to go, I know I would volunteer to go. And we could um give out some flyers, trying to get people to the website and giving them any information about the city, um anything that they would like. Lexi has created a new um resident little flyer with some of the main information um that. Uh we can email as soon as it's all finalized, um it has information about septic systems and wells. And different things that people from other communities may not know about, has contact information, not only for the city council and. Planning and zoning people, but also for different contractors that would do things for us, as far as um that are available in the city. Um who our contractors are, as far as the building permits, if you decide you wanna do something, so it's kind of a nice, and that could be something that we could be handing out, that we can make. Right in-house.
I would volunteer my time for this.
Thank you, um at the last meeting, I was also directed to try to find um somebody else. Besides our current planner that could give a proposal, um I do have two companies that I have spoken with, um. And Planner Nash is also working on something, um trying to come up with a plan as to what it is. From the the training that I went to, I had two different cities reach out after I put it out on the bulletin board that the clerks.
Is that the one where you get five hundred emails on every time you, somebody asks a question and then you?
No, not all of them.
Okay, so what?
I didn't put it on the LMC, I put it on the the clerk's only, and I had a couple of them and, or administrators as well, that reached out that said. That they were in the midst of doing something, so I have WSB is looking at it, and I have another individual that did not write down his name. And I should have, um so I'm hoping by July to be able to have something with some sort of a number. Knowing that it's not a budgeted item, but it is something that we seriously need to look at.
That'd be wonderful, you can bring your proposal back.
Then an update as well, um just a reminder that I will be out the remainder of the week. Um so you're not really gonna, I'm probably won't do an update, so I'm just gonna do it tonight a little bit, where um the administrative staff will continue to do. You know, what they normally do, um we are closing an hour early tomorrow because I don't have staff. And Friday. Public Works has been out doing hauling gravel and still waiting for a new cylinder for the Packer. Uh the John Dare tractor, the ditch tractor is supposed to be back on Friday, so hopefully without those repairs, I'll be able to start on that. Dust control will start down tomorrow, um provided on the weather, but rather right now, we're scheduled for tomorrow. Um crack ceiling should be starting on the June twenty-third, um just meaning that it's gonna be a. And if again, based on weather, and also um we had kind of a little blimp in. Some of our uh internet investigation this week, or I'm sorry, Friday, Monday. Again, Friday, I think it was, um but there's a Zale. Information in our system, and that is what Craig was looking at, but that was what we um directed him to. Look at the different buildings and if there was a way to connect them better, and as he was doing that, he inadvertently um doing some testing. Shot off a switch which somehow turned off Saint Francis.
Oh, it's all one big line, yeah.
And but nobody has any information on it, and the people that set it up.
There's a map somewhere, because, yeah, it's, it wasn't, sorry, it was a, a Noka County thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's one line that travels through all the different cities, and um yeah, from here it goes up, and then I believe it hits Old Viking. And then runs up to forty-seven and then shoots up to Saint Francis, yeah.
Well, there's no documentation anywhere, but you can find.
I have to, I don't know if I still have mine.
Hey, well, the county and Zayo are trying to find him a map, they, we were able to get Saint Francis back up and going. Um as far as I know, um Craig is gonna continue to work on that, and he said, I will have everything documented as to what it is. And if it works the way that he thinks it may work, um it may be a good solution for us as well. Um but he's still investigating, so just kind of an update on that.
We had a hub. We in 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 your office?
Yes.
And then, but we weren't ever using it, and it was, when it was a conference chairman, it was very annoying and very loud. And so at the time, because we weren't using it, we we requested that it was just be taken out, so the Zayo goes up to the office as well.
Thank goodness, okay, so it would, if if it is truly all working, it should save us some of the R V I G. Um payments that we would have.
No, there was hook-up fees, and if we're gonna use it in the office, then we have to pay to re-hook it up, and the R V I G might just very well. And or Comcast be cheaper, but, yeah.
Okay, well.
Because the fire station is, was using it as a backup, at least, or they were at the time, yeah.
It's just so interesting that I can't find any documentation, and so um Craig is gonna work on it, thus, so just kind of an update for you. That that's where we're at on that, and he's still continuing to work, and I just found it a little amusing that, and unfortunate that we took. Trying to investigate.
Okay, any comments from Ms. Johnson? Alright, let's move on to old business, well, it looks like we started on B, I don't know what happened to A, but okay. Move a resolution uh for Veterans Memorial Ad-Hoc Committee. Councilmember Rainbow, would you take this one?
Yes.
On page two twenty-one.
So, council last month determined or voted to. Have ad hoc committees um from time to time to deal with specific. Issues or projects, um I'm. Requesting that we provide, we adopt an ad hoc committee. To work on the renovation of the Nowland Memorial, Veterans Memorial here at Nowland Memorial Park. Um, I would like um to include veterans. Uh not residents that are, Nowland residents that are veterans, um and or their families. Um if we have people that are interested in doing that, to try to come up with the plan to re-renovate our our memorial. The original was back, Bill Schultz and Isaac Schultz is a, not even, probably a teenager. Did that, so it was time it needs to be redone, um so I'd like the council to determine how many. People they think we should have on a committee, the timeline um. Of advising the community for the opportunity to serve on the committee, and then how do we wanna choose the committee members? And then the ad hoc committee would determine a timeline for the committee to meet and develop three proposals. In that is what should that area reflect, do the granite memorials that are there needed to be updated? Added, if we add in the the more recent conflicts that the nation have been in um with our military. Um, should the area be designed to reduce ongoing maintenance? Um, do we need to change any electrical out there, I know when the Lions have, at times done the the tree lighting, there's been issues with the electrical. So do we need to look at updating that electrical, um and then do we need to look at redoing the Now, City of Nowland sign? To make that um reflective to what we're doing within the memorial. Um, I don't have a cost, because we don't have um. Proposals yet, um but they would come out of the park dedication funds, because it would be a permanent structure.
Anybody remember how much money we have in the park fund?
Two hundred and.
A lot.
So it's not, it's not gonna be an issue, so if we spend thirty or forty thousand dollars on this, it's part of the park fund.
Yes, to me.
Maintenance or? Is that considered maintenance as it's in the?
This would be considered new, and last year we did have thirty thousand dollars reserved out of the park funds for this, um it just never got completed.
So um at last week's or last month's meeting, I asked if anybody had any suggestions for committee members. Um to forward them to Natalie, and she would forward them to me. So I'd like to ask permission to to move forward with this, um I would work with with Nat uh with Lexi. To have a uh update on the website, on the Facebook, um we could put some posters at city office here. Um to try to get um residents that are interested in participating in this. As part of our um fee schedule, and I don't remember the resolution number. Um but the members would get a stipend of forty dollars for each meeting that they attend. They are not allowed to um commit the city to any monies, um any expenses. So anything that they do for bids would have to be no, no cost bids, things like that. But, so that's.
Recommendation to the councils, what I'm assuming.
Yes, yeah.
If you're looking for input, uh do we have input on the number of people to serve on the committee, first one? Any input on that one?
There's many people of their interest, is there a lot of interest in them?
I don't know if there's any interest, so we'll have to find that out.
I made a couple of phone calls last night, and we have two people that are interested, that are veterans. Um, I've worked with a lot of teams, and if you're looking at a team trying to make a decision. As a committee, it sometimes makes it very difficult, so my recommendation's five to nine people. Something like that, you get over that, you might as well throw it out the window on how you're, are you gonna get any type of?
And and I would suggest an odd number, as if there's any votes.
And and let me clarify what I said, I just assumed there'd be a low amount of. I didn't imagine we'd have a thirty people committee, but yeah, so you're suggesting believable.
For a timeline, does anybody have a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I, we may, we may need to look at. This maybe particular, maybe in different phases, um as I understand it, um someone came, Natalie, somebody came to the office and was asking about the. The marker at the ball field.
Yes, there was one over there that asked, wants, he wants it put back, and that was part of the original plan.
Yeah, the marker got taken out and just is sitting next to the garage, and so I would, if 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 renovating this. Might take a little longer, I would seriously entertain trying to do something a little more immediate with the marker that was taken out. Um because it was just all covered with brush in the back and the trees behind home plate, behind the fence. There was a marker in there and for with a veteran that needs to be addressed, and I mean, I. If it's, if it's just re-putting it down and doing something, then, but it would be nice to incorporate that. In some way, shape or form, because it's just sitting there, it's. It either needs to be included in this memorial and plan, or it needs to be, because it was originally separate. That it beats, because it it has, it I I um I believe it was Mr. Miller, because it, he was in World War Two. But it, you know, it literally has um a ball player engraved on it as well, so it it would be nice, depending on it. To incorporate a flagpole, not that we have to keep a flag up there, but the ball players might wanna flag or something. But instead of just having it sit by the garage as it is, it either should be re, it either should be buried in concrete and in the ground. And put something around it, or at least temporarily, or incorporate that somehow, but I, I, in my opinion, that needs to be done sooner than later.
Okay, I I'll talk to Natalie and Steph on that and see what we think of that, I mean, is it like, is it just a round flat?
No.
No, it's a big.
It's a. Practically, I would say it's a cemetery marker.
Oh, okay.
Can I give a recommendation of sixty-eight weeks once the committee's formed? Would that work? And the last thing, it's how will members be chosen, is there any recommendation to Councilmember Rainbow on how members should be chosen? Give some input, if you got less than nine people, I think they can all be included. Maybe we cross that bridge when we get there?
Get there.
Well, do we want to include, I know there's at least two veterans on the council, as well as family members of those who served that. It could be a matter of having two council members um either participate as, or participate or be involved in. Um selecting membership as.
And I can certainly help, I'd be willing to help on this one.
I I did also, I thought I had it in here that I would like a public works member to be part, participate in it. Just they, they're the ones that are gonna have to maintain it and maybe have some ideas, so. Oh, yeah, I do, committee should consist of community residents, veterans and or their families, a member of a public work stash, staff and council representative, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this one, or can we send it to vote? You got your, you wanna make a motion first on it, I know you talked about it, but I don't think we got a second.
I I'll go, I I will move that we uh move forward with an ad hoc committee um for the renovation, the veterans. Um for the renovation, the Veterans Memorial Park at Northern Memorial Park.
I will second that. Okay, any other discussion? No, move with the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, we are going to see. Voltsville City Council. Um so if you had a chance to read this, one through five were the original goals that we had uh. I'll say it started in January or February, they're either completed or they're almost completed at this point. Or we've moved on to other things. Uh the next list of ten things were some additional things that were in process at this point or already completed. Um and their request was to discuss what should be our new goals um moving forward. And you put one in there. Uh Ms. Johnson, you put number one in or approve the job descriptions for city clerk treasurer, administrative staff?
We did, because I feel that's really important that we get that done.
And I would be fine with it, I just. Do they need to be updated first or they just need to be approved?
They need to be actually created and.
Alright, so we get some work.
Forward, we have um some old job descriptions, um we've definitely changed how the adminis administrative staff. Is working than what was previously done in the past.
Okay, yeah, so we have the descriptions, they just need to be updated to reflect changes and.
They need to be updated, updated and then approved. There's two requests there.
Yeah.
Alright, is there anybody else write anything down uh for goals that we would like to set for the city? Well, nobody's gonna go, I'm gonna talk. Um first of all, I would love to get some emergency weather sirens, and I say sirens, but it might be a siren. Um I know the chief miller was working on a quote, I don't have it in front of me, I don't know what the cost was.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, it was not budgeted this year, that may have might be a fine goal, but we can't do anything with it this year. So I think we have to shelf that, but there's one I wanted to bring up as as a goal. And I think the high volume well ties right into that same thing. But we don't have any money, so it's gotta get shelved till we can budget the item. When I say we don't have any money, we don't have any budgeted money. So let me clarify that. Anybody else wanna go with goals?
So one of the things, Mr. Mayor, in regards to um the emergency weather sirens, it I I would like that to include a. Um sound study by, because the manufacturer actually provides that for free.
Yeah, yes, please.
So.
Know where the zones where they gotta go to cover?
Yes, so I I would like that uh. That to be incorporated in that and have that happen first.
But maybe maybe that is the goal right there, try to do the study so we understand how many we actually need. I I don't, I I heard something that we need four or six is what chief said, but I haven't seen the document. But did that include the study? I don't know.
Well, and it, so one of my questions is that since the last, since the siren was installed here and now then. The surrounding communities have grown up quite a bit. So are are. Residents that are um more on the fringes of our of our city. Picking up um sirens from surrounding communities.
Yes, we are.
So so I I think that's im- important to, so we we're not just throwing, you know. A dart at a dartboard.
We definitely don't want to throw darts. So just give you an example, Ramsey has is twenty-nine square miles or thirty-five point one square miles, they have seventeen sirens. We currently have one, but you're correct, that whole north side of now then, correction, south side of now then. Is all covered, so there's coverage, so that's why we're gonna end up having a lot less. I guess there's one one good thing about growing slow and. Not taking action, we're gonna have a lot less sirens to maintain, cause it there's a there's a maintenance cost in these things too.
Two hundred and sixty dollar, I looked at the invoice, it's two hundred and sixty dollars per year for siren, so.
So the the person to talk to about, I think. Maybe to start with is is Rob Schiller with. What's the name of his electric company?
Ready One.
Ready What?
Oh, Ready What?
Yeah.
Ready What?
Because that that's that's a a very, very much a part of his business. Is is the uh. Installation and and service work on weather sirens, so he has a relationship with the manufacturer.
And I think that's who Chief Miller reached out to and talked to specifically.
And that's a free study?
The the manufacturer, I was told by Rob that the the manufacturer will provide that service.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Randall.
I would just say our our one and only siren was was donated. Uh Bill Schultz got that for us. How many years, I I think right before would, right after we turned the city.
And I think A and B um donated them.
Okay.
The tower for it.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure they probably did, yeah.
Another recommendation is implementation of CUPs and IUPs. We had talked, we do change up some ordinances or rewrite some ordinances. But I think that's a really important one. So it's understanding who needs them, who has them, and then the enforcement piece that comes along with it.
And that would be a, that's gonna be kind of a long term working with Cindy. Um so we'll have to kind of go back to the budget portion of that, that may be something for. Twenty twenty-sixth, depending upon how much time we're gonna spend.
Let's hope we don't have to wait that long, but yes, if we have.
Yeah, there.
Another one you brought up is roads and the 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 differentiation of adding some clay to roads so they bind together. And the calcium chloride, we have some roads that are terrible as far as dirt roads. I would like to make some forward progress, you know, we don't have a lot of money, but. Do we have anything else there that we can use for roads to make them better?
Um after a conversation with um Mr. Glaze today about that, after all the hauling that they did, they did try to use. The the better quality gravel this year with things. Um of course, it makes the budget a little bit smaller with some of the repairs that we have. Um he wants to wait until we get those invoices back to see how much they are before he does any more hauling after today.
We we would know what he's paying for, I know we don't have the invoices yet, but.
Right.
We would know, so we should be able to calculate and estimate how much he's spent compared to.
Well, we have on on the gravel and such, but he's thinking, we don't have enough money in maintenance in the maintenance line, so. Um he is wants to wait and see what we have for those invoices and what the grader and the tractor are going to cost, cause it's. A larger amount than he was anticipating having to spend. Right now, he thinks he's got about five thousand dollars left in the gravel money.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Questions. Natalie, so I know in the past we've gotten the gravel from place steps.
Yes.
And now we're going to Ogilvy to get it because it's got a higher click content. Do we know a, I'm just gonna call it a cost differential per ton? Of the difference between Elk River and going to Ogilvy?
Well, there's gonna be a difference because of mileage as well. And I know that Joe has that number, I just don't know it off the top.
Cause I'm just thinking we budgeted for one thing based on. Past practices and going to Elk River, so now we're doing something different, so. It's, you know, so we but I understand we budgeted a mountain, it might not be enough, but we.
Right.
You know, do we do we have an idea is like, okay, well, we always got. Pick an example, forty tons from Elk River and that's this cost, well. If we are going to Ogilvy because it's better clay and the road should last longer, then forty tons is gonna be. One and a half or two or whatever it is.
And I can get back to you with that, cause I know that Joe knows that number, I just don't recall what we had talked about.
You know, and again, is there other options for gravel rose to mix in something else other than just adding the clay to? That would keep them keep as a binder to keep it together.
Yeah, it's just that place studs didn't um offer the higher amount.
Right, yeah.
Right, so um Ogilvy, I know who did say was the closest and the cheapest for him to be able to get that mixture.
Like to go to the next one, uh city ordinances, as we've talked about, it's gonna go out for bid, we're gonna rewrite them. But the next target on that, the long term piece is to get our a fee based system for permits, so it's not an escrow base, but a fee based system. Now, will we accomplish that in the next two years? I don't know, but I would certainly like to drive in that direction, so if a resident says, hey, I would like to do said A, build a house. We could give them a fee based cost and not. Here, go turn in a bunch of money and we'll figure out what you get left. That's where I'd like to see it go, and it ties into our strategic piecework. Uh I think we owe that back to our residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember um.
I I would I would like to see us work towards a goal of reopening the office to our. Previous business hours and as opposed to. Once we get back up to staff and hire this this fourth person. We have residents that that uh. Need to do business with with the city and may not be able to get there. They may need to get there before ten o'clock in the morning. And so. I'd like to see if we could set that goal to to restore our 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 normal office hours.
I don't, what what are the previous hours and what are the current?
They were for nine hour days and noon on Friday.
Well, there've been a couple of things, um there were four ten hour days with Friday off. And then there were. Was eight to four, people complained they couldn't get there by four. So we went to four thirty and then we went to five. But we also at one at one time, we're opening, excuse me, at seven AM. But that was when we were working with contractors and they were doing bringing permits in, which now is all through on river. So that's not an issue um.
Can I ask what our current hours are?
And they're five, um they're open to the public ten to five.
Then Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday. And staff is there by, I'm usually there by eight and the rest of staff is usually there by nine. Um I started doing that earlier because I just needed the time. Um we have had some conversations as staff to try to go to an eight to four. Um they are keeping track of how many phone calls we're getting before ten o'clock that go into the voicemail. Or it rings, cause it'll tell you how many times we miss. Um and they're also keeping track of how many people, how many residents are coming in after four o'clock between four and five.
Give a recommendation, what hours you were looking for?
I guess I would look to, I I would look to other cities to see what they're doing.
Okay, we can definitely make it a goal to evaluate hours from other cities and see what the best hours to be open, absolutely can be a goal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Swenson. Um the only idea I had to add to this list, I felt maybe was a little too general for it, but um just figuring out how to encourage development of. Of commercial and industrial in the city, attract them, make us more attractive, I. I don't know what specific goals we could set to work towards that, maybe um Natalie would have some good ideas talking to other city administrators. You know, what they've done, I mean, this is not a new issue, and probably have to reinvent the wheel or do something crazy like I suggested last week and. Water up a quarter of the city. I mean, there's gotta be something we can do, so um I I mean, that. In my mind, that that ought to be a goal to expand tax base without cramming in houses and keeping taxes low and getting some money in the city. But again, it's pretty broad.
You have one more like that, do make sure we schedule the tabletop exercise for the EOP for the emergency operation plan. Think that's really important, we get a new chief, we got a lot of new staff on it, we're going through that process. It like I just emailed chief, I'm like, there's some major gaps in there right now, so going through the tabletop exercise. You start asking questions, you're gonna identify what these gaps are. And it'll show that the EOP is not complete. It's it's a good draft, I know we signed it off, cause we didn't have something signed off, but we need to develop this. But you got one more, I know that I've been requested to add a crosswalk. On twenty-two Viking Boulevard, so they can walk from County Road five across without getting run over. Um that's definitely one that we can talk about for discussion, and then one final one is just street sign evaluation. That the street signs, some of them are very nice and some of them are so old, they're not even reflective. And if you try to like find a street at night, it's sometimes it's very difficult now.
Uh that one has been started, they do have a list that's been going um where. Delia and Joe have been working on that together together to. Determine which ones they are, my answer from Joe was the signs are very expensive, so he replaces them when he gets complaints about them.
That'd be a very good plan, I think it's a terrible plan. Waiting to tell somebody complains about a specific, how about if we evaluate our signs, get a total cost and we can. Instead of.
Which is why they've started it and moving on with that.
Is there any other goals?
It's just mostly the cost. From Mr. Mayor.
Not suggesting we can fix them all right now, but we can budget and plan for it.
The crosswalk on five and twenty-two is would be county project.
But maybe it's just to turn it into the county to get um rolling and say we we would like this, we don't want to see anybody get run over.
I will um. If if council doesn't mind, I will contact uh the county on that.
Yeah, yes, please. That would be wonderful. Anyway, I I can't speak for you.
It's basically saying the same thing, it's county county road, so there's not gonna be a lot that we can do, but if it's a matter of just. Spriping it with the painted crop box.
But I'm assuming the county takes care of all that, all we do is put the request into them.
Yeah. I I I'm gonna also at the same time. Talk to him about the. Lights on the stoplights on Cleary and twenty-two. When I had asked them to do the ones like forty-seven. They went a less expensive route and I would like to see. The lights that are on forty-seven and twenty-two also be on Cleary and twenty-two because we have accidents there.
Yes, please, no, the seniors asked for the same thing, I did request that to Natalie and they said. Not right now.
Yeah.
They said no, but maybe you can help encourage them. Is that a good enough list of goals right now? We can come back and refine them? Okay, can we close that chapter? Do we got a vote on this or are we okay?
Oh, we're good.
Alright, what is the next one? Google, okay. To add comments to city Facebook. Your resolution for this one also?
I think you're just looking for a motion. As you can see, and if you um understood everything in the RCA, basically. Lexi explained how that works, how many followers are on there, um what's happening. She wanted me to read an example, she said recently the most interaction we had with a post was a post made about the fire department when we shared it. Or when other residents shared it in the community groups, there were much more interaction and very many views, this is an example of how to comment on a. Post, on our page, we had zero comments and twenty-five likes, which is the highest, which was a a record for the city on a post. The Now Then Bulletin had four comments comments and thirty-six likes and the Now Then Bullet Bulletin had nineteen comments and resulted in eighty-four likes. Because of those likes, it gets them in the algorithm, therefore it'll pop up when people are are um surfing on. Facebook, um all of the comments were positive, most of the posts that we have, I don't know that there could be anything negative. Um and they're talking about, you know, the holidays, they're talking about the fire department, we're talking about the burning bans or not a burning ban. Um but in order to. Get the engagement with the community, we really need to have some comments to get into that algorithm. One of the things that was brought up when we go back to the septic system um compliance portion was. Whether or not residents could potentially opt out of a mailing reminder and ask for an email reminder. If they're not going to our Facebook or not going to our website, we can't capture that information. Um and if you look, she's not spending a lot of time on it, a lot of times we won't even um respond to any kind of comments. It would might just be, you know, visit our website, but if if we put it on Facebook and say, hey, if you want to. Share your email with the city, so you don't have to get a postcard, which would save money on your septic information, boom. Or if there was some sort of um activity going on and they wanted. Um emails about when every meeting is, or if they wanted um copies of the packet or something sent, they could possibly sign up for something like that. I would um. I don't, we just need to get the word out, because we're just not getting the algorithms, councilmember Swenson was in the office today and he said. He rarely even sees our Facebook page.
It just doesn't pop up.
It doesn't pop up, cause it's not an algorithm.
Okay, so that's the the request, let's just talk concerns we had in the past on this, concerns. If I remember right, you went to Lincoln City Training, the Facebook stuff, you couldn't remove the comments. I think comments are on there and you can't remove them. Unless they hit a specific category.
Right, we can monitor if they get the famatory or um vulgar. Like that kind of a thing, but otherwise you can't and again, the posts that the city would be making are informational. It really shouldn't. Cause too many negative comments. Um and if it does, we just kind of ignore it, I guess, is kind of what the other cities are doing, we are the only city besides. Hanover in the communications group that Lexi is in that does not allow comments. And her comment was Hanover has its own set of problems, that's why they didn't, so.
Ken, Mr. Mayor. Can followers of the city Facebook page create an actual post?
They cannot, it would only be a comment.
Sure, man, because it's a post, they typically would comment on that post.
Correct.
Cause he, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it sounds very sensible just to increase. Yeah, I mean, I think it sounds very sensible just to increase engagement and, you know, have our. Uh, announcement scene in the city and be able to make announcements to a wider group and have it seen. I mean, I just. Like I told Natalie, they they just never pop up on my Facebook. Sometimes they'll pop up weeks later or something. It's like, where the hell would this come from? Uh, so it it and I agree, I mean, I've never seen the city post something that's. Even mildly contentious, just straightforward announcements. So I think the risk of of, you know. Objectionable comments is pretty low and the the, you know. The risk of that happening is, you know, vastly outweighed by the benefits of having more people see it by increasing it in the algorithm.
And the other advantage that she pointed out as well is because to remove the comments. You actually have to make the post and then go back and remove it. Where if we allow the comments, she could schedule like a a week and a half worth of different posts or two. Two months worth of posts of things that she wants to get out. And it would just automatically post and she could only spend, you know, a couple hours one day and then she's got a month of them scheduled. Unless something new comes up.
Could actually take less.
It would, yeah.
That's not something we discussed before, so it's interesting.
Yeah, we didn't know that you had to be able to go. We thought you could just turn it off with a button, but you actually have to post it. Go back, so she can't schedule anything to just automatically post.
All right, any other concerns on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ryan.
What, what is our objective with Facebook? I mean, we're, I can't imagine we're out to be the number one visited page in all of Anoka County. Um, if it's a matter of getting information out there, we have. The information can be on the website. I know with the, our new website provider, they they offer mailing lists that if people wanted to. That we, we have a newsletter and and they can get, that's because that's what we used to do. We used to email out. The, here's, here's the packet and you could sign up for that. And tho- those were all administered by hand. I know that. Looking at the website, um, people can literally go on the website and go, okay, I want the P and Z. And I want announcements and emergency information and they could, could literally pick what they wanted to get and then an email shows up in the inbox. So if it's something that's there, it's um, it's, it's readily provided. I don't think that. Um, the goal is to have the Facebook show up on everybody's Facebook page who lives in Now Then, because if they're interested and they're going, what's going on in Now Then? They can literally, if I understand Facebook, say, show me the city of Now Then page and it would, would show up whatever's there or add that to their feed. And so I don't see why we need to be, you know, um, necessarily looking at comments because yeah, that's a lot of time to manage comments regardless of what it is. And and I just don't think that that's something that we'd want to to get into, you know, needing the comments turned on.
And Mr. Mayor. The opposite, the um. Um, what did you say? The objective would be to send people to the website. So if she's got something on Facebook, you could click right to it. It could bring you right to the email location on the website. But the whole goal is to get people to start using the website, you know, and I'll ask you all directly. You know, how many times do you go to a website or are you breezing on Facebook and see something that catches your interest?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I I do get your point, Councilman Brian, but if you look at a lot of these Facebook posts, I mean, a lot of them are just alerts. Not necessarily something that people are going to go looking for. I mean, you know, there's fraud alerts from North County that are reposted. I mean, a lot of this stuff is just sort of announcements to residents that they might not necessarily even know to look for. Because they don't know what's going on. That's the purpose of it is to notify them. And so I just, again, I I think the objective is to. More broadly and adequately keep our citizens up to date, not put the burden on them to go to our website. And proactively vote for news or announcements or sign up for emails.
They'd be emailed out. Because they said, I want to find out about X, Y, or Z. That's doable now.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend that we baby step into this. Where. We take the next step because the, I have two concerns. Is it going to take more staff time than it does now? And are there, are comments going to get out of hand as far as. Types of comments and information that's being shared by followers of the page? So I I would like to recommend that we. I think this is going to get approved tonight whether. Regardless. But I'd like to ask that we come back with a report nine, either ninety, sixty, ninety, a hundred and eighty days, whatever it is. To say. We've had that, we've had the comments on for this period of time. Here's the, it's either taken more time or less time for for Lexi to manage this. And here's what the comments are, that, you know, the level of comments that we're getting.
So something similar to what you did here.
And and then, and then we could say, you know, it's. It's a good thing or it's a bad thing. And we need to change what we're doing. Ninety, sixty, ninety, a hundred eighty, what's reasonable?
Yeah, I would ask um, to like not count the month of June, so if we could do like July, August. September, maybe.
That's fine.
Just because I know um, she's got some posts that are already set that Delia's going to be making while she's gone on her honeymoon.
So I just, Natalie, do you know if? Um, I like the fact that it'll would allow Lexi on January one, let's say we're starting January one. To go in and post all of the meetings that are currently scheduled for the year, whether it be council. Or P and Z, if you have to go in and change one, um, then change it. If we, be- because if we allow comments, she can do that. She can do like memorial, you know, holiday updates, things like that. Um, if we then take comments off. We have to go back to posting individual, but those wouldn't stay on.
That's, that is my understanding of it, that the uh, schedule one would not stay on because you have to actually physically go in and turn it off.
I, 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 I have faith in our residents um, that. Again, what we're posting is just info and then directing you to a website. People are. People want to be spoon fed information and going to a website on your own is not being spoon fed. Having it come up, if you're a Facebook user and having it come up on Facebook. You have that info, what you choose to do with it. Um, I have faith in our residents that. The vulgarity, vulgarness, things like that, we won't have that. You have to put your name on it. And it's a, you know, I.
Ma'am, can we do this? Just a request. Can we go with what Councilmember Glazer said? Review it and bring it back up in September, let's review the data. And we'll revoke on it. If it's, if we got too much vulgarity, we'll take them off. But looking at a short term thing, we'll revote and look at. If it's great, great, it stays on. If it's not great, we'll take it off. And and I think we can bridge this gap, and I think your proposal is exactly what else kind of look at. Let's look at something short term and we reevaluate.
Okay.
So, the, you, would you make a motion on this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to. Allow comments on the city Facebook page to help growth and community connection online with the um, addition of a. Review period um, for the October. Council meeting.
I'll second it.
That would include uh, July, August, September.
Got a second. Any other discussion? Move to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have one, aye. Motion carries. Okay, so we're done with that. Next one, we are going to go back up and jump into the consent and then, I J K. Councilmember Blazer, will you uh, bring up what you would like to discuss on them? So, what page are you on? You go, did you move them to the top?
Yes, I'm sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. For your, sir.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, my question, and I guess this question should be addressed to Ms. Johnson. So both. June twentieth and July third, we have a staffing issue, forgive me if there is an, I. And it's sometimes it's a little tough for me to read emails during the day. But.
Are you asking for clarification?
Just clarification.
Okay, so the twentieth, uh, Lexi is still on her honeymoon. I have that day scheduled off. And um, it has been common, well, Mary's not available to volunteer and Chris is not available that day as well. And it has been um, common practice since I started. That we don't have one person in the office alone due to the safety and being able to actually um, help all the residents. We did have one resident who did some intimidation um, in the first few months I lived, well, actually six months, I think I was there. Um, and that was when the council had approved saying, nobody but, you know, no one person in the office.
So Lexi's off because of her honeymoon and you're off for.
I'm out of town. It was already on the schedule. We should have had. Chris or we would have had Shelley, so there still would have been two people when these, when the time was scheduled off.
And then July third, that's a, that's a. Due to a family thing, family thing.
Yeah, it's the same question last night. That's what probably, like, somebody else must have asked, and that's what prompted you, you know, because you're the same, same question. Right, are you good with that one? All right, we got a vote on this one now, because it was part of consent, we pulled it out.
Yeah, we just need an approval that it's okay to do with the motion.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the closure of the Now Then City Office on Friday, June twentieth. And Thursday, July third, due to limited staffing and holidays, full-time employees will take ETO for both days.
Second from Councilmember Brian. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, post, motion carries. Right, so you know, we're going to J. Send on page seventy, sir. What we're looking at, consultants to acceptics, okay, so page seventy.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so, Ms. Johnson, if you could help me, I I just need a little bit of clarification. Because I'm not sure if I'm understanding what's being proposed based on what. Uh, Andy presented uh, at the meeting back in. In May. Uh, the. The additional cost to the city for having Rum River do this for us. Could you please clarify what's in here? And. The additional cost that the city will incur by having Rum River do this for us.
Uh, my understanding with them is that it won't cost the city much more other than upgrading the ordinance, which could be up to nine hundred dollars. But she thought it was going to take potentially less than that um, for creating the amendments to replace the current ordinance. Um, basically what will happen is they will take care of. Um, doing the permits through baseline, just like we do our building permits now. It will all be kept through their system. Um, it will automatically generate something that could say, hey, this person needs to get their. Septic system either assessed or pumped within the three-year system or within the three years. So instead of us, which we have not been doing apparently in the past, they used to, Councilmember Brian. We actually found one of the postcards. Yep. And we discussed the cost of postage, which is how the email part came up. And then they have a two thousand dollar annual fee for the SDS reporting that's required by the MTCA. Um, which is what they need to be able to keep all of this information. Um, it was quite a task last year that they did for us. I don't think it's something that the previous council understood had to be done. And it's an annual report and they collect all of this information. What would be nice about it as well. Is I know that there are some non-compliant septic systems out here right now and Rum River will take over. Trying to get them into compliance. And after speaking with Mr. Glaze about this again today, he said, he knows there's several locations that have not been pumped in. Many, many, many years. But what we will do is the, the cost, well, there would be a little bit of cost to with Delia's time because she would go through every file that we have. Enter it into their baseline when the last time it was pumped or assessed. Which we have been keeping track of. We've just been filing and knowing, not really doing anything with them.
We haven't met the reporting requirements from the state of Minnesota. So this will allow us to be in compliance.
Correct.
Total cost nine hundred dollars was for the estimate. That was also to reiterate the city ordinance or revise the city ordinance. So it's that and then the two thousand.
And it's, it'll be annually that two thousand for doing the report.
And there's a cost to residents for doing this said thing.
Well, it's, yes, I'm sure that the contractors will probably pass it on to residents.
Mr. Mayor. The one thing that I don't want to happen with this, I, so, I'll use myself as an example. I, I give myself a reminder every three years to pump our septic tank based on. The, the number of people that are in the house and and the size of the system. Uh, what I don't want to have happen to residents, we have some residents that have homes. That are, and the capacity of their, of their system far exceeds the input.
Correct.
What I don't want to see happen is, is that a resident who, who is. Already capable of managing their system. Know, knows when they need to, it doesn't need to be pumped every three years. I don't want, I don't want to see those residents have to pay an expensive fee. To have a contractor come out and assess just to tell them what they already know, that they don't need to pump their system because, you know. They, they don't need, they, it would be detrimental to remove. The affluence from the tanks. And I, I think even Councilmember Rainville might be one of those people.
Oh, yeah. So, and um, Councilmember Glazer, he did, um, I know, I believe Andy addressed that. That we know that it doesn't always have to be pumped. And they're not going out and knocking on people's doors and saying, hey, you have to pump it. They're just going to keep track of all of the records. Um, it's up to the city whether or not we want to do a reminder or not do a reminder. That is not part of the mandate. We just have to keep track of all the information so that the report can be done at the end of the year. So that the state knows how many non-compliant systems we have, how many systems are in compliance. And how many new systems went in. It's again, another one of those unfunded mandates that. You know, the Minnesota uh, pollution control is requiring.
And it wouldn't force them to pump it. So if they didn't. There wasn't inspecting is what it was, but there's some costs that came along with that inspection if they wanted to stay within that three-year compliance.
Right, and it is not um, Rum River that does any of those inspections. The only thing they inspect is a new install. So this would be your, your um, contractor that pumps your system and. You know, quite frankly, most of the time they're going to know if you're really in compliance or not. And that's when we get notified, is either at the time of the sale. But uh, you're transferring deed or transferring title or um, at the time of. Getting it pumped is when they'll notice that it, because on the permit, you, they have to circle pass it fair.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember.
Uh, Brian, Natalie, do you, I, I, I know because we've used the postcards in the past and we just sent out the reminders, but we didn't really do anything with it. So to take that information and if we were to do that ourselves, how much, I'm, I'm just. Making the argument, how much time and effort would it and cost, do you think it would take to. Implement, implement that plan to, to do this, this thing ourselves?
To keep all the information or just do the?
Keep the information and to, to assemble the reports and.
Uh, at this point, I would say that there's nobody on our staff that's qualified to do the report.
Wasn't it a couple hundred dollars as I read in this, is what they were looking at per year? Like two to three hundred dollars or something.
I don't remember how many uh, the actual report took, but that's why they were charging their two thousand dollars was to be able to do the report. But I am certainly not qualified to be able to run this report.
But I'm just trying to. Weigh the cost in here because we are, because there, the, the fee to get your tank inspected is going to double. As far as what the city is charging residents in order to do, to do this.
Correct, but the city is taking the permits and we're not doing anything with it.
And that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get at. We've had the, we basically did the first part of sending out reminders and, and, and. Having people um, fill out the permit and get the information back, but we've never really. We haven't finished, did the second part of evaluating that and compiling that information together to, in order to process the report.
Right, and if we use the baseline, baseline will actually keep track of all of that information. And if so, we can move to an email reminder or we just don't do a reminder. We just put stuff in the newsletter. We put it onto the Facebook and the website page. I, I mean, we're all adults that own our homes. The biggest problem that Now Then has had and other rural communities have is that you have somebody moving from Bloomington and they don't understand. What you can and cannot put into your septic system, that you should not have a.
They're going to find out real quick.
Yeah, because things, yeah, it all gets all done and yeah, you should not have a garbage disposal in your sink.
So total cost of this city, uh, to the city is twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Correct.
Annual fee.
The nine hundred.
Nine hundred is one time, so it's two thousand. So our cost is pretty low compared to the hours, that's why I was looking at it. I thought this made sense. One time, so it's two thousand. So our cost is pretty low compared to the hours. That's why I was looking at it. I thought this made sense for the.
And to be in compliance.
Right, but the residents will pay a higher, more than likely pay a higher permit fee. I I don't, because because it's going from ten dollars to twenty.
Okay, ten dollars.
It'll be incorporated, I'm sure. Incorporated into the from or into their fee.
But it would be incorporated.
So ten dollars every three years.
I think it sounds pretty manageable. But good, I did not know that. I didn't know to double the fee. Is there any clarifying questions? Any more questions? Can we move move this to who wants to do the motion on this? All right, please.
The council moves, I I move that the city council approves resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five. X X authorizing Rum River consultants to revise the septic system ordinance and implement a septic compliance system for the city of Mel.
One second. All right, let's move through the votes. Since there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right, Mister Glazer, you want to take the last one?
Yes, sir. Mister Mayor. I believe. I'm of the opinion that we this, we the city of Now Then and and I say we. Council, staff, contractors. That. We, the the Drydens. Had a date of March thirty first that they were told that they had to pay their bill. The that date. The the city should have had the foresight to say. You know what? That date is not going to work because. The Drydens were in continued dialogue. With members of the council in regards to the bill that they had received on January seventh. And that that actually wasn't even going to be addressed. Until. The April meeting, I believe this was it April eighth or. And. I I feel that Attorney Rupi's. Decision to be preemptive about filing. Paperwork. On a resident that has been here for over forty years. Ms. Johnson, did did had, did the Drydens, have the Drydens ever not paid any of their other bills to the cities, to the city?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Were were the Drydens proactive in in contacting you throughout this process the last couple of years to say? Do we have any additional bills that need to be paid?
Uh, they were. And the amount that they paid prior to receiving their building permits. They did pay as well.
Mister Mayor. I I feel that. Although this. Three hundred twenty-five dollars may not seem like a lot of money. To me, it's. The city is being punitive. In in a, in. Making the decision to file the paperwork on something that was that was never going to happen. Because shortly after after the the. The decision was rendered at that meeting in April. That drive paid that bill. Wrote a check for the entire amount. And and I think this just forced salt on on a very large, already very large. That. We didn't need to do. My my recommendation and my motion would be that that. The city. Take her safe responsibility for this and and write this one off.
I'll second.
Can you add discussion real quick? Because I wanted. With discussion, um, and you were correct, because we were still in discussions with the Dryden. When that was being written up, so it should have been not. Done at that tone, because we hadn't got to the April council meeting where we were going to discuss it. So I can curt. Any other discussion?
No, I think. Mister Mayor.
Whatever your council number is. Again, tired guys.
Yeah, I um, I. I don't disagree with uh, Council. Uh, and Glazer. Um, you you know, they still had time on this. I understand, you know, in the legal world, you sort of got to be preemptive and meet certain deadlines and all that jazz. But, you know, that I I don't think. Maybe sufficient notice to the Drydens was provided that that was ongoing. I mean, they probably. Reasonably relied on on us discussing said future meetings, so.
It was still in discussion.
Yeah, so I. I think it's reasonable.
Councilmember Rainbow, do you have anything?
I I know it's punitive, um. In the legal world, you you have to be prepared. And that's what our attorney was. Um, and so I believe that the the Drydens. Should cover the cost of this, um. But I will go with the majority of the council.
Any other discussion?
Mister Mayor, I just just thought of this, um, based on the resolution that was provided, if I mean, if. And I don't know if it needs to be amended or not, that we can. amend the motion that this is, this will be the, that there will be no more invoices for this property. Unless they decide to do something else on the property, but this matter as far as building their houses closed.
I I would not support that because. If further actions taken by the Drydens to challenge any of this, part of that developer's agreement is they. Cover attorney fees, so I don't expect that they will. But if a month from now they go back and challenge any of this stuff. We need to maintain our ability to tax attorney fees, and I think that would be appropriate. But I, you know, as I said, I think in our last meeting or the one before that. I mean, it, for all intents and purposes, this is it. I mean, if nothing else happens with the property, this is it, you know? And so I I think this is it, but I I don't think we can put a hard end on it because we can't control others' actions. And we can't control what's going to happen. We need to leave that ability open. But again, I do think it makes sense to. To waive at least a small bit of it, but a hard end, I would not support.
So going back to Councilmember Glazer's motion. Does it still stand? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, still standing. Your second's good, you rescind your last portion. Nobody, nobody's looking to carry this on. That's not the intent.
Just trying to clarify that, and since the motion was not amended by the main person who made it, there's no word, we don't do anything.
Perfect. Are we ready to move this for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. So although it's, it's already been, you got the motion to rescind it, uh, we got it second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Mister Mayor. May I just make one comment on this? Um, in the future, when you guys are reviewing the bills. If it's brought up at the time, because the way that it's said is I have the bill. Because that's my direction. If. Council wants to pull something from going on an escrow statement. When I send you the bill for two one prior to approving claims is when we would want to talk about. Not including it on an escrow going forward.
That this was brought up, I know we've talked about, we've specifically talked about this.
Didn't know what it was for.
Wanted an explanation.
So there was needed the explanation, understand what it's for and what the timing was and how, but when you read it, it makes sense.
Yeah, that would make more.
Anything else?
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Just want to go back to the the basketball pickleball court. I just wanted to make a motion to approve.
Did we have one in?
Yeah, we did. I pulled that one too. The clarification.
You wanted to see, sorry, I skipped over you.
Hey, don't worry about it. We're good.
Okay.
Um, I just want to make a motion to approve the resolution in twenty twenty-five, accepting the quote for striping the um. Stripping the existing basketball slash pickleball courts, um, so that. The pickleball courts would get striped in one color and the basketball court would get striped in another color. And that the source of funding, it will be come out of the capital, uh, park capital fund, not the repairs and maintenance.
Was the court to do it in two different colors or is this?
Yeah, that's what we talked about. Yeah, it was just. There was just a clarification on where the money came from, but it's not a repair, it's a capital improvement.
Perfect.
I'll second.
All right, we'll take it for a vote. No more discussion on this one. Just kidding. Let's discussion. No, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Suppose. Uh, motion carries, Mister Mayor.
We're going to do an update, an internet update.
Uh, yeah, internet update. Can I unread, unadjourn real quick? I forgot about the internet update. I was so.
Everybody has a copy.
Yes. So we do have some maps in front of you, but if you can put it up there to show the rest of the residents, because they might not be able to see it. Uh, Ms. Johnson, myself did a, did a uh, a meeting with Comcast. Again, they're still working with Conexus, working through the packets. Uh, they've currently identified four hundred eighteen. Of the midspan poles that need to be added. This is already in progress in some poles. Uh, permits are being approved on a timely basis and there's no major setbacks. Um, but what they propose, and if it goes up there or it's on this map. Is that there's dates that go along with it per zone. So like zone one is June and July, which covers the main city area. And here's a little sub map that ties in with that. But as long as the permits get done on a timely basis and there's no major setbacks from Mother Nature, they should be able to hold these time zones. Uh, zone two is August, September, zone three is July, August. Uh, zone four. Is August, September. And then uh, there's zone five, which is October, November, which a lot of that is already covered by the uh. Uh, Arving. Um, the one main point to to recommend here is that for residents, there's no cost to get connected. Um, there might be an exception if you lived on a private road or a shared driveway. So as you're going through this and they're coming to your house. Um, that is your time to get it pulled all the way to your house. That's a no cost. So I would recommend that for everybody. If you wait two years and you say, I want to get connected, you have to pull it to your house, then there's going to be a cost. So the biggest thing is please, uh, even if you don't subscribe, get it connected to your. Main takeaway. And then this map could be shared. It's going to be shared on on that, but it's not shared on that.
Right, it was, it will be shared in the packet, but this is not currently in the packet because we just received it.
Okay, so that is the update. Any questions on that at all? Things are on track. We're working hard to make sure the city gets internet.
Way to go, Rogers Lake. You got internet, faster internet.
It's coming. All right, in June. All right, thank you.